Here.
Are you sure? I don't know if I can see you now. Customer Chazek?
Here and good to be here in person.
Customer's office?
Here and great to be here.
Perfect. And me as mayor, so we have a quorum of four. So I would like to call this meeting to order at ten eleven. Okay, so can you guys, oh, thank you for that.
Wow, this is definitely good funding.
So the meeting, the meeting got called to order. Next step is review of the agenda. Vice Mayor, can you please read this very lengthy talking agenda?
Right, just about the public hearing regarding the proposed real property tax and proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget.
Read.
That's all.
So read the number two, number three, number four sequence because usually it's red, so that way our residents that are hearing this can.
We're reviewing the agendas, so that's then and then the only other thing is adjournment, which is.
So we have the public hearing proposed real tax property proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget and number four is adjournment. So that is the first part of the tax property F Y budget hearing. So if we have any member of the community that wishes to speak on this point after we addressed was being proposed. If you are online, you could type your name on the chat. We should be able to read it. And if you're here, they will pass you through when you walk in, okay? So I want to also start thanking our communication team for making sure we were able to make it happen where we're here physically. But we're also are able to be on virtually. So this might be the new hybrid reality for us because we definitely like to make sure people are have the meeting accessible. Mr. Kamali and your whole entire team for putting the budget together as well. I know you guys have been working a extra, extra hours on this, so thank you for that. So we'll move forward to reading the tax fiscal year proposed tax break first, the tax rate. Can you go ahead and do that, Mr. Kamali?
Yes. Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Do appreciate the opportunity and good morning, the great people of Mount Franny. So I'm going to turn it over to our finance consultant Ron. And Ron is going to walk everybody through that process that we put the notice out on March the seventeen. And Ron is going to provide you more information on the new assessment and new tax rate that we have.
Thank you. And thank you, Ron, for joining us today.
Oh, my pleasure, and thank you for having me. As you know, by Maryland law, we have to calculate something called the constant yield tax rate each year. And that constant yield tax rate, the rate at which we receive amount of tax revenue for our new assessable base. We have several different classifications of real estate in the city. The biggest one being the residential single family homes. That was included in the notice. Our assessable base for fiscal twenty three will be going up seven point six percent. If we kept our tax rate the same, our revenue for this category of real estate would go up seven point six percent. When we calculate the constant yield tax rate. That will be seventy three point four one cents per hundred dollars. We're currently at seventy nine.
The. Can you repeat that again?
Yeah, we're currently at seventy nine cents per a hundred dollars of such value.
And what would the constant yield be?
The constant yield would be seventy three point four one cents per hundred dollars. I believe that this chart here is in your minders.
What page or?
Okay.
No, it's a different one.
It's, I can tell you.
Well, the last.
This page it is.
It's this one?
Beginning.
Go back.
Not that one.
I think at the end.
It's this one. It's a different right here.
Yeah, no, no, no. No, apparently not.
Can you guys make copies of those?
Melissa, can you scroll down to the next page?
It's not that we had it in the back.
Or the one after that.
The notice that has been published.
Yeah.
Make a copy of it.
Yeah, can you guys run down and make a copy of it, please?
Oh, right. Is it this?
No.
No.
Another document.
Right after that.
It's this document.
Yeah.
It should have this.
But.
I'm sorry.
By law, just to clarify for the, you know, for the residents and for us as well. By law, that notice is published in the newspaper a certain amount of time. What happened in a previous year, it wasn't published in the correct location, so we had it to revoke on the budget in June. You guys recall that.
It's right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Page six or seven.
Yeah, right. The next page after that.
Yeah, I see it there.
There you go.
Yeah, I think he's talking about.
It's on the screen.
It should be fine. So yeah, if you guys could run it, so we could have it for our files, it'll be fine.
And this notice was, this public notice was made.
Yes.
And it included this particular chart.
March seventeen.
Where?
And the name of the newspaper, Gazette. Gazette, 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 I'm sorry.
Okay, it's fine.
So for residential, single family homes, if we kept the tax rate at seventy nine cents, we would recognize an extra two hundred and twenty three thousand dollars of tax revenue from this category. The other categories that we have right now are apartment multifamily, which currently is assessed at eighty six cents per hundred dollars. And the assessable base has gone up five point four percent. The constant yield tax rate for apartments and multifamily would be eighty one point five seven cents. The next category is commercial. We are currently at seventy nine cents. And the assessable base has gone up five point six percent. And so the constant yield tax rate for commercial property would be seventy four point eight three cents per hundred dollars. For industrial, again, we're at seventy nine cents. The assessable base has gone up five point six percent. So the new constant yield tax rate for industrial, seventy four point eight two cents. And then for townhouses, the assessable base has gone up ten point seven percent. We're currently at seventy nine cents per hundred. So the constant yield tax rate for townhouses would be seventy one point three six cents per hundred dollars.
So, Ron, I have a question for you.
Yes.
This assessment is based on what timeframe and is it projected within the next six months, a year, or what is it looking like, or is it presently as of today?
Yeah, this, this is given to us by the county. And the new assessable base is as of July first of twenty two.
July. So this is for F Y twenty three between July first twenty two to June thirtieth twenty three for the fiscal year.
And, and those assessable bases have already been established. So as soon as we give the county our rate, they will send out the notices for that year's real estate tax.
Can you, can you? Okay, I know we're used to say raise your hand or let me know you guys need to be called upon because if not, this is going to get really, really crazy really quickly. Jared followed by Jimmy.
So the assessments, those are, that's done by the Marylandest staff, right? Does that happen on what basis?
Um.
Like a three year?
Well, I, I don't know how they do the assessment.
But. Sorry, the cadence is what I meant.
Well, I'm sorry.
The cadence of when they're, when the assess, when this assessment was from.
Uh, to my knowledge, that has already been established.
Okay.
And they're just waiting for the new tax rate.
Okay.
Okay, Jimmy?
So you quoted the, the lower figure, so the current tax rate is seventy nine. Then you said if we kept the same revenue, it would be seventy three and a half cents, something like that?
That's correct.
Right. I don't see that number in any of these charts.
That is in box H, right over here.
Seventy three point four, okay. So just to make it clear, so if we wanted to have the same amount of revenue coming in, we would then be lowering the tax rate to point seventy three four.
That is correct.
If we keep it at the current tax rate, our revenue will be increasing by seven point six percent.
That's correct. And the dollar amounts are in box eleven.
Okay.
All right.
Luke, you have a question?
Um, no, just a comment for folks. So just so residents understand, sometimes there's a bit of confusion and there's a thought of why don't we just keep the tax rate at the constant yield taxes? That way we have the same revenue. And every year, the mayor and council realize that property values are rising and so taxes are rising. So we have since going back to at least when Celine and I have been seventeen, we've been reducing the tax rate to try to decrease the amount of taxes people pay so that our revenue doesn't just go up as property values go up. But it's difficult to get it down to constant yield tax. And the main reason why is the operating expenses of the city, the major one is staff salaries. And staff salaries go up most years. And so if you keep the constant yield tax, you will not even out the budget because you will not be able to afford staff salary increases. So in other words, the same revenue from last year doesn't buy the same services the next year because your cost of doing business goes up. So while we always have a goal of getting close to that constant yield tax, sometimes it's not possible because the cost of doing business goes up from year to year.
The other thing to add to that is not just the staffing, but also like I said, the cost of items that we do. So we realize that whether it's items that we have to purchase for the city for projects, equipment, or even contractors, everything goes up. And that's part of the things that we face. So as much as our team does a great job at trying to make sure they keep everything under low cost. Doing negotiations and also making sure that they're like looking for the things that we need at the, you know, at a low cost, right? The reality is like the same pencil, like the equivalent of like, you know, the dollar tree, right? Last year, the same pencil was, you know, a dollar. Now it's a dollar twenty five. And that's the reality that we face. So if we drop too low, it gets to the point where we might not be able to supply the same services that we're thinking. The other point to address is, so I just came back for the mayor's association meeting. And the reason why I asked about like how long does this yield expand? Was because we had a whole presentation by an economist that let us know that we need to be a little bit cautious with our budgets for the next, you know, you know, from on to the next three years. Because we're right now at a point where we could potentially have an economic depression. It was avoided a few years back, but that doesn't mean it's not going to be avoided again. So unless something changes, we're heading towards that direction. So he makes sure to let the whole entire mayors that were there, and there was a lot of us. This is a conference for the whole Maryland mayors to be very cautious on what we're doing to make sure that we have enough money saved in case that happens. And that's part of it. The other part of it is like, if we're doing something with ARPA, right, the second portion of ARPA, don't count it fully into our budget because unless the check has cleared, it's not a hundred percent guarantee it's going to be there. So it looks like most of it should be there, but there's still talks about like figuring out how to be able to assess some of the budget. And if we're getting this money, then we don't need other kind of money. So that might be part of the things that we need to consider, even how we're looking, looking at this budget to make sure we have enough money saved in case we have a rainy day. And that was very helpful even during COVID. We didn't know what it was going to look like. We squeezed our budget and we were able to carry the whole city functions as, you know, and beyond. So that's something to keep in mind, even as we're reviewing this budget, just just not think it's like because of ARPA, we have like, you know, money raining on it. But also make sure that we are fully conscious that that situation is boiling up so that we're prepared for what the next years are here to come. Jimmy, go ahead.
Just one more question. These maybe half our residents, if not more, have a homestead tax rebate where they don't pay the full amount of city taxes. Is that calculated in any of this?
Yes, the effect of that is included in its calculations. And that's given to us by the county as well.
So seventy nine. Okay.
So I can give you just.
That's all right.
An example. On the residential communities, there are almost seventeen million dollars of reductions in the assessable base because of things like the home side tax.
So normally it would have been four sixteen million, four sixteen million if it wasn't.
That, that's correct. Yes.
So this is already calculates all the.
Yeah. Yeah, what the homestead tax credit essentially does is limit the rate of increase, the assessment of a particular piece of property.
So that is one of the informations we are going to be posting because I think most people realize how much money goes out in their homestead or home credits or historical stuff. So we're going to be posted in the website so that way people are fully aware that the help is being given out. And if you have not registered to homestead, please register because it does, I mean, it lowers like our, our taxes in the city. If you do it like when it comes to income, but it does help our residents to make sure they stay here for a longer time. I know like Jimmy has been working really hard in that complaint and so a couple of us, I know we've pushed in this for a while. And Brian used to be like, very much like on it, but it's very important that people apply so that way they get that extra help. All right, so Luke and Jared, anything else to add so far? Any questions for Ron at this point?
Not at this point for me.
Okay, so I was going to remind us of something when it comes to the council rules to make sure we try to keep ourselves in track of time. First round, you have three minutes, second, two, second, one, if we need it. So that will be more or less like, it doesn't mean you need to use the three minutes, but you have the flexibility to do that if you have nothing else to say. Okay, that's like our roles and, okay, so. So we already heard what it looks like if you were to keep the taxes as is. I know the council has, all of us in there have asked, what it would look like if we reduce taxes? And was the one, two, and three in the different fields? And I think that that should be the next step for this conversation. Currently, if we're going to open it to this section, then I'm going to open it to the community once we have this, this, this conversation. So that will be make sure we're all like, you know, figuring out what it looks like. And thank you for putting that together since the last meeting. That's the final, the final, right? So this budget is online, right, as well?
Yes.
Okay, so if you're a member of our community, the budget is on our website. If you guys want to follow, follow through, follow through with it, okay? Just search for F Y twenty two, twenty three, sorry.
Proposed budget.
Proposed budget, F Y twenty three on the website, you're able to find it, okay? All right, so the floor is back to you again. I know, thank you for putting the chart together. So we want to know, I know we were not a hundred percent specific on which ones we wanted to. And I want to make sure we do not make past errors. So we need to be very clear. Look, I'm going to make sure we're assigned to that.
Yep.
Very clear on what is the taxes that we're looking into to reduce to make sure there is no confusion and we give the, the team. We, I mean, we were clear last year, but we want to, you guys were, none of you guys were here. So it's none of you guys' fault. At least you weren't here in that capacity because you were here as a, as a director. But I want to make sure how to call it out, that is the clear where we're at and what we're asking for. And that way, there's, there's no loophole on that one. Okay, all right, so let us know. So we requested various tax changes and you put the screen up for that one?
You don't have that one in the package. So we thought that you may just want to see it for the mayor and council.
That's fine. Can you, can you put it on the screen so we could see it better?
Sure.
That's the only thing I'm asking.
No, you cannot. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Then we'll make it up.
I'm, yeah, I can tell you what the numbers are.
Okay.
They aren't that.
All right. Go ahead.
So.
It's the last page on our package. So can I ask you guys something for future, for the future edition of the budget? And I didn't realize this until like today and apologize for that. Can we put numbers on the pages? Because that way we could follow a little bit better with you guys.
Sure.
Because it's a lot of beautiful pages in this budget. I want to make sure we account for them.
No, thank you. We'll do that, please. Make a note.
Perfect. So go, go ahead.
All right, so if, if we reduced the residential and the townhouse rate by one cent, in other words, from seventy nine to seventy eight, the reduction in tax revenue would be forty thousand five hundred dollars. If we reduced it two cents, you double that, it becomes a reduction of eighty one thousand and some change, eighty one thousand oh ninety two.
Okay.
And, and if you reduced it three cents, then you would reduce the real estate tax revenue by a hundred and twenty one, six hundred and thirty eight, a hundred and twenty one thousand, six hundred and thirty eight thou, or six hundred and thirty eight dollars.
It's basically forty thousand dollars for every penny.
It's well, about forty thousand for every penny.
Yes. So the other thing to point out, I know that last year, inadvertently, we reduced two taxes, the commercial and the industrial down to seventy nine. I know we had talks last year that we might want to bring it up to like level it out a little bit because we dropped it down lower than we originally intended to. So that's something to also consider as we, as, as if we increase it where it should have been last year, right? And decrease the home, that might upset some of the costs as well. So that is just information. You guys decide what you choose to do, but I want to make sure that that was in the table because that's something that was discussed following this summer, once we got the pieces of the budget put together, yeah. So I'm going to open up the floor to whoever the customers would like to speak. Chazek, you look like you're thinking.
Um, yeah, I think that to the extent we can do a tax break, we should. Probably, you know, closer to the three cents if we can. You know, the change in assessable base was seven point six percent. I know that the feds just came out with their inflation rate over the past six months or a year, and I want to say it was five or six percent.
Yeah.
So maybe if we could figure out what a, you know, we're going to have to cover that inflation rate, we're going to have to cover salary increases. So maybe if the revenue instead of going up seven point six percent, maybe goes up just five percent or four percent or whatever the number is, you know, then we, we pass along the difference between that and seven point six projected in tax savings to residents. At least a starting point for discussion.
That would be about two, two, two cents.
Two cents.
Two cents.
Okay. So, so somewhere in there, and then I'm open to conversation on that front.
Jimmy?
Uh, you know, I, I think the devil's in the details. So when we go through it to see where we can cut, I mean, I mean, the people who are really hurting on taxes are the people who recently come here because they don't get the homestead tax credit. So they're, you know, they're paying ten, ten thousand dollars in taxes. So I think we definitely have to do something about it. I'd be into more, but I think maybe it's a question of looking over the budget and see where we can cut as opposed to making a decision.
Yep.
Before we do it. I, I do want to mention on the commercial and industrial, that, that's such a small amount of revenue. It's less than ten percent. That trying to, you know, kind of raise it doesn't really help that much.
Right.
But, you know, that's just, you know. So I mean, I would be more into, you know, kind of across the board. Again, it depends where we can cut and we should, you know, look to see, you know, what item can cut and what items we can do it. Inflation doesn't necessarily, wages aren't quite going up as high as the inflation rate is going.
Three percent across. So that's, that's what's been proposed. And to be clear, they should have been at eighty six percent. Was it eighty six or what was?
Eighty one.
Eighty, they should have been at eighty one instead of seventy nine, but there was an error that was made from the past finance director and and that's the reason where they're at. And there, where they're at. So I am not in favor of like reducing those two because as it is, they're already like a lot lower than they should be. And that also like affects how much we could reduce on it. So I'll tell you this, usually we, we let the staff know that we're looking into the reducing eighty thousand out of it so that we have a goal to try to figure out, we go to a budget where we're going to reduce amount on it, so it makes a little bit easier on them. And at the same time, if they know like eighty one is what we're looking at, they could start making recommendations along the line. But let me hear from you, Jared, then we could give you guys where we're looking. So you guys are thinking recommendations for us for maybe not this one, but like, you know, the future meeting.
Yeah, in, in general, I'm just going to echo the same thing you all are saying. You know, obviously the obviously inflation costs are going up. You know, we need to be mindful about how we cut our, cut our tax rate. But also I'm keenly aware as of everyone else that taxes and assessments are going up significantly. And, you know, if we can find a way to kind of meter the, so, but again, you know, I want to make sure that we're you know, we're able to maintain a level of services delivered, need to be delivered in the city and the staff to deliver them. And that's, that's very important. So just one thing on Jimmy's point for anyone watching, the homestead tax credit. If you're new, you can, you can still get it. You can sign up for it when you move here, but you don't get the benefit of having your, your, your tax cap starts at whenever you file it, not, not retroactively, yeah. So for anyone listening that you should, if you've moved here and you haven't filed the homestead tax credit, that'll provide a cap on your tax increase every year. So please make sure to do that. Reach out to any of us if you have any questions, but information's available on the website.
Thank you. Um, so I, I also get a turn. You guys, you guys tend to forget, like you guys think like I'm just talking for talking. I'm part of this council. I get my three minutes, right? I should let you guys go first. That does not mean I don't have nothing to say. You guys are funny. All right, we'll go ahead. Jimmy, this will be the second round.
First, did you do your first round?
Uh, no. I didn't. All right, so I would say, at least for me, will be like residential, single family home and townhomes, like we're looking at what you guys proposed. And thank you for putting that together, at least for me, when it comes to the reduction. And I'm somewhere, it's looking like maybe two, between two, three as well. But I think that I want to see what the numbers look like once we get in deep because I want to make sure I get clarity whether how much of, of it is, is landing on ARPA when it comes to the budget. Because I wouldn't count the check until it lands here. And I mean physically here, we checked it, it's with us. And, and I think being cautious of it and even the information I told you, I think that's what I make sure because the last thing we need to do is reduce taxes to increase them. And that's what happened a couple of years back. They got reduced so low that of a sudden they had to jump them up pretty high and it wasn't like two, three cents high. It was a lot harder to be able to justify because the city was running and Mayor Miles and Brian had like told the story endless times, right? Where we were paying via credit card to be able to fulfill our payroll and everything else that, that needed at one point. We do not want to get to a point that we give people false hope of like reducing it so low. And then we're like, and now you have to do twenty five cents up and, you know, because we cannot afford X, Y, and Z. And I'm not talking about little things before, I mean, like being able to run the city at even a, as low rate, okay? So that's more or less where I'm at. Okay, so we'll do second round, Jimmy?
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm interested in more than two cents, three cents or possibly four cents. I mean, our revenue increase according to the document was two hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. And so, you know, again, I, I think people who are moving in here are really kind of suffering in terms of the tax rate. And we should try and kind of decrease it more, you know, if we can, we can. I'm not comfortable with just kind of saying two cents in terms of how much it should be used. And the second thing, I'm not really interested in, in raising or, I mean, I'm interested, I mean, our commercial people are people who, you know, are having to run businesses. And I'm not sure, you know, reducing or raising it is, is helpful because, you know, there's, you know, they're having to, to raise, you know, to run businesses to raise. to raise, you know, to run businesses, to raise it. Anyway, that's where I'm at. I'm not comfortable with just saying two cents. You know, I'd be interested in, you know, looking at the numbers to see, you know, where we can cut and I'd be more interested in three or four.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I think, I think we all share the interest to cut taxes for residents. And so I think we can get to a point where we're all gonna be, whether that's whether that's three cents, whether that's four cents. I think we can look at the budget and, and see if we can get there. I think on the commercial and industrial tax base, increasing the tax up would only give us eight thousand five hundred dollars and that's just nothing. So it's not even worth it to increase it from my perspective. So I think we keep that the same as opposed to not hit on our businesses, so. And that's it.
Thank you. So to be clear, I had promised to bring it up and that's what I did. I wasn't taking a stand, but my job is to make sure I provide the information I can to the body. Because I will, won't want you guys to come back later and said it wasn't brought up and you said it would, right? So, and I said my piece on it when it comes to the other two, Town Hall Residential and we'll go through the budget and figure out, I think that at this point more or less it sounds like two, that doesn't mean it cannot be cut anymore. But we need to start looking at least a starting point at where we're gonna reduce eighty-one thousand dollars. Eighty-one thousand, eighty-one thousand ninety-two dollars from this budget. Okay, so that would be like at least a starting point. The other thing to also keep in mind as we go, the information when it comes to what inflation looks like. If we could cut too low, then we're gonna have to be cutting severely pro- programs. I'm not talking about like five dollars here, five dollars there, I'm talking about severely. Because we're not gonna be able to, you know, be able to afford it. And that's the reality of it. And from the proposals I've seen, it's like we have has been asked more of us as a city, not less. And with more comes more fees, more money and everything else involved in it. So keep that in mind and also, just for the audience, I think that when we say the community includes us, because every single one of us sitting here as council that's voting on this proposal owns a property here, pays taxes here. So this is not by any means like, we are not being affected. Like if it was, you know, for us, we'll be like, cut him as much as you possibly can and beyond because we'll be positively affected also ourselves. So sometimes we need to make decisions based on what's best for the city, even if includes that we have all be at a certain level. So just want to make sure that's clear.
Or I don't know if Jared needs a turn or I can go. Oh, no, no, I, I'm sorry. I said, no, I'm fine, I'll say a letter.
I have a tracker. I'm going like this.
I think once we, we look at the great budget Mr. Kamali's proposed, I think, I think the, the three percent, the three cent percent is gonna be really doable because right now in the budget, Mr. Kamali proposes about a four hundred thousand dollar surplus. So that can absolutely do a three cent or a four cent reduction in the tax rate. So I think we're in, we're in good business.
Alright, so that was, I guess, the final comment. I would say, once we dive into the budget, we'll figure out because my big question is like how much is depending on ARPA? Because very much of this budget is dependent on ARPA, we still need to like on the next meeting make a decision that it was briefly touched on the last meeting, but I think it's like for us to be able to decide which means whether we're gonna utilize the under ten million rule that ARPA allowed us or not. So that's gonna be in the next agenda and that will also signify like what we're looking at when it comes to reporting, what we could utilize ARPA or not and what we have right in front. Number one.
Which we talked about, the final rule, the Treasury Department announced that if we have received less than ten million dollars of fund, we could use general government services, put some of this money and the reporting is gonna be so easy for us and the normal things that the city does, like, you know, spend some money on infrastructures, so you could classify it under government services.
So I'm, I'm gonna add some, so this is, I barely touched it, but for the meeting, I'm asking Mr. Kamali to have Tom come in and explain what it means to us so that we could make a decision that we could give a straight direction to, to Mr. Kamali to figure out what it looks like and then move on from, from there on so that our decisions are reached, but we have a whole entire presentation on it. So definitely we'll, we'll help in deciding some things in the budget, but be aware if this is heavily depending on ARPA, we need to make sure we're not building our house and like breaks are not solid. So I don't want to make sure that before we say it's a eight million dollar or seven point something million dollar budget, that we know how much ARPA is in this direction into that, even when it comes to the reduction, because I don't want to end up with two point something less in this budget and this one or two percent is not gonna mean anything. We have to find two million somewhere else to try to fulfill it. And going to research should not be the first, should never be the first option, especially with all the infrastructure projects we're thinking of. It does quite a bit a lot this year. Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to the community if anybody has any statements when it comes to the tax rate. Let us know if you are in the chat. Can you guys see the chat?
I asked the city committees to come now to talk during the public hearing proportion because we didn't know when they were gonna get a chance to talk later. And I saw the item as tax rate and proposed budget, so if there can be time for them at some point earlier, that would be.
It is public hearing, so if they want to sign up in the chat, they can.
Speak in the chat, okay, great. So Tim and Sarah, you can do that now, thanks.
How do you miss this whole entire conversation? So that's why I was asking the staff if they could see the chat itself, you know, so that way we, we know. Okay, so do we have any member of the audience that we should speak?
I'm trying to see how many people.
You will have completely mute or, or shut it down. So Jimmy, it's in the screen already, okay? So if you want, just shut it down because you can see.
I was actually trying to see if there's a way to find out who's participating. I'm looking at that.
It's right there.
I always see two people do.
No, and the screen itself, it says, who's there?
See the chat in the middle? See the box in the middle of the screen? Communications, Jared, Mike, I'm on TV.
That's everybody else.
But when will we see that?
Jimmy, okay, so let it run and we'll give you one example and then if you still like have any questions, or if you think we need to fix something, we'll do it. Okay, so do we have any member of the committee that wishes to speak? I think or Melissa, I'm not sure which of you guys is running the part. So make sure that when you speak, you give us your block number, your, your name as well. And if you're speaking on behalf of a committee, please let us know you're speaking on behalf of the committee. If you are speaking on behalf of a committee, please be aware that no other member of the committee will be allowed to speak because you are taking their time. You have three minutes to speak as an individual, five minutes to speak on behalf of a committee. Okay, give us one second as we're working, take some of the tech. So, Tim Jenkins, the floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Tim Jenkins. I live on the four thousand block of Thirty-Fifth Street. And you probably know what I'm here to talk about. I'd like to, I've previously proposed a composting program for the city of Mount Rainier, a pilot program that'll be behind the community bike co-op. I've come up with a, a final budget for that. We are asking for six thousand five hundred dollars. That includes materials, installation, and running the program for one year. That program will be run by the, the new company, O Scrapp, of which I am a member of. And so we are asking for that money to be put into the budget. This will support forty families from the city of Mount Rainier. So this, everybody, forty families or forty households will be given a bucket and their food waste can be then brought to the composting system behind the bike co-op. And that'll have a capacity of seven point one cubic yards. It'll process for two months, it'll then age and cure, and then that product can be redistributed to the community. I'd really like to think of this as an infrastructure project because the product can be used in landscaping, gardens, but also rain gardens. And compost really helps absorb rainwater and helps reduce flooding, which is an issue in this community. So just a quick breakdown, we've got four thousand dollars for the tools, materials of the installation. It's gonna cost two thousand five hundred to run it. That means someone training, educating the public and receiving those materials, blending it and collecting data throughout. So grand total, six thousand five hundred.
Thank you, Tim. And just for the audience, if we're looking of what it seems to be away from the cameras because the screen is on the opposing side of it, that's the reason why you see all of us facing that way and not this way to you guys, okay? So that, that's, that's the reason why. So we're not ignoring you, but we're definitely looking at the screen so where we also see you. Alright, alright, thank you, Tim, so much and customer Chesek is, is like making notes on numbers. As we see in here, like tagging in some numbers down as any conversation arises when it comes to like numbers being proposed. Okay, so we could keep tally. Alright, perfect.
I'd be happy to, I have fact sheets and updated proposals, et cetera, that I can share with you guys.
If you could send it to council@mountrainiermb.org, we definitely would love to have it so that we have the latest information on, on this proposal, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, perfect. Thank you so much. Next, we have Sarah, who would like to speak, who would like to speak next. Hello, Sarah, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Lipsy. I live on the four thousand block of Thirty-Sixth Street. And I am the chair of the Green Team. I just wanted to say a, a few words, thanking the mayor, council, the city staff and everyone for all their hard work on this budget. I think the city has been very generous in supporting the projects that the Green Team has put forth over the past couple of, the past several years really. And I think that we have been able to, with the support of the mayor and council, with the support of the community, with the support of lots of great volunteers, really get some innovative green projects off the ground, like the, like the native plant network and some of the, the other native plantings around town. And that, I think that is, in the coming budget year, would be great to be able to move forward some of these other green innovative projects that are really helping put Mount Rainier on the map in terms of sustainability. That's really all I wanted to say. And also thanks to everyone that has supported us and supported all these projects over the past, the past year.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Sarah, to you and the Green Team for all the work that you guys are doing, very innovative, making sure we're keeping our city goals green and make sure we get to apply to all those wonderful certifications and it's a long process. And year through year, quarter by quarter, or season by season, you get us on track to make sure we submit everything we need to become Arbor City and all the other stuff. So we are very happy to have you guys here with us today, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, next I have Mike to speak on behalf of MRAC, the Art Commission. Go ahead, Mike, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, all. I'm here on behalf of the Arts Commission, wanted to echo Sarah's sentiments. You know, we're very grateful that the city has taken an interest in investing in public art. I wanted to advocate for Emrec having its own line item in the city budget. Currently, we are listed under line item fifty-four hundred on page twenty-three of the draft budget in front of you. It would help us to understand the scope of our projects and with planning to know exactly how much money we have to work with from year to year rather than competing with various other entities drawing on the same bucket of funds. I think that earmarking specific allotments for each of the entities drawing off this line item would just help to track expenses, streamline accounting and help with the efficient management of this volunteer group.
Oh, that's, sorry to interrupt you. So on the proposed budget, line fifty-five fifty-five lists as public art programs and there's an allocation of nineteen thousand dollars in it, okay? So they requested it last year, but it was, it's added. So you guys already have your line. I don't have a number page, but it's in the latest, in the latest budget, it is there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, I totally missed that as well. Luke, I, I should have gone line by line.
That's fine, because remember, I'd rather you, I'd rather the community speak up and say something that we end up like later on further along the budget and then we're like, oh, nobody mentioned it. It's not because of an oversight, because I think at times we all feel like somebody's gonna mention it and we're running around doing a thousand things. But I wanted to thank you one for coming, making sure you pointed out, and I'm glad to say there is the line item on this final proposal of the budget and it's a separate item for you guys as well. So you'll be able to do everything you mentioned when it comes to pre-planning and make sure that you know exactly what's in there.
Great, thank you very much and thank you to Mr. Kamali for making sure that that made it in there. I really appreciate it. And I'm happy to share with the council the budget proposal that I sent him, just for your knowledge and edification. So I'll send that to the council inbox. But thank you all for your support. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mike, and I'm happy that that was resolved very, very quickly. Alright, Mr. Kamali?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to council member, member Chesek, because I received an email from you about two or three weeks ago to create the line item and we received the proposal from Arts Commission. It used to be on line fifty-four hundred, then we separated it. So now they have their own.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So, Mike, please extend our, thank you to the whole Art Commission. I think part of having the city to be welcoming, diverse and representative has to do a lot with the arts as well. I get a lot of positive comments from all the various murals and the work that you guys are doing. So we are definitely changing the city to be more who we are in arts, entertainment, technology, fashion city, and that's definitely being in a green, very green city. That's definitely being portrayed on, through our murals as well. So thank you for that. Alright, so we have, who's the next person that chooses to speak? Alright, perfect. Okay, so seeing that there is nobody else that would like to speak, is this being streamed on Facebook as well or just through? Is there anything on Facebook? Oh my God, our team is great. We're streaming it through, was it Zoom, Facebook and, you know, and here. So thank you guys for that. I know that was a very hard task to give you guys and you guys rest on the occasion. Alright. So there's nobody here. Facebook, there's nobody making comments and the chat is clear, so I would like to say at least we have, then so Mr. Kamali, we could discuss when it comes to the budget, so we don't discuss the numbers. So Chesek, thank you for like taking down the the information through. Alright, council members, I will ask to entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing. So we could like move into like the budget itself. So they'll probably move by Chesek second by Stofus. Keep butchering your name, last name, right? I'll get it eventually. So any objections, abstentions? So the FY twenty-three budget hearing regarding real proposed property tax and the budget itself has come to an end at ten fifty-nine. Alright, so council members, we're gonna have a five-minute break, so we could like stretch, get whatever we, we need, so we could like dive in. So we'll be back in five minutes. Members of the community that are listening, thank you guys so much for being here this morning. I know you guys could be doing a bunch of stuff on this beautiful day. So we enjoy having you guys here and thank you to our various committees. Some of them spoke right now and some of them have been speaking to all of us. Thank you for everything you do to make sure the city continues to function and provide all the services it needs and dedicating your time. So five-minute recess. All right, ready? Can you put the next agenda up, please? Jimmy, your, your, thank you so much. Okay, so thank you, everybody, for holding. We needed to do a quick stretch, since we're going to do a, dive into the budget right now. So I would like to call this meeting to order. This is, can you put the heading up? The agenda for the FY23 Budget Work Session for Mayor and Council. At this point, we could do roll call again for the sensitive. It is 11:14 AM at this point. Jimmy?
I'm here.
Luke?
Yep.
Jared?
Here.
Ta-ta, Jared. Yeah, and I'm here. So we have a full quorum. So this meeting is being called to order at 11:14 AM. All right, so at this point, we're going to do a review of the agenda. Can you actually read every single point for residents that are hearing, that cannot see the agenda itself?
Call to order, review of the agenda, propose this fiscal year 2023 budget review adjourned.
Okay, thank you so much. The agenda has been reviewed. Is there any changes to the agenda, Council? It's easier to just see you guys shake your head, like, have to be like, I didn't need to like position you guys where I'm looking like clockwork. All right, so seeing that there's no changes to the agenda, this agenda has been approved as proposed. Moving on to item number three, proposed fiscal year 2023 budget review. Mayor and City Council review the proposal FY2023 budget. We are going to be having our directors coming in as well through the day to be able to address the various functions. Mr. Kamali, I'll give you the floor so you can say a few words before we dive right into this.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor, again. So I am proposing a budget for FY23. And I will start going revenue section first and then start going to each department and then the expenditure for each department.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali.
If you allow me, I will start the revenue section. All right, revenue, with your permission, I'm just going to go to the summary of each section, like tax revenue. So if we look at the tax revenue, we estimated 6 million and 39,133.82, which is 14% more than last year. And the reason that we're doing that, because last year, the tax, the property tax was at 4.4 million. And we just collected 4.6 until January. So we're hoping for FY23, we get something over 5 million.
Let me put a pause right there, Mr. Kamali. So just so the audience, so our committee knows, the property or tax does not come in one check or two or three or four. It basically trickles down through the year. And that's the reason when we make decisions, we try to make sure we have decisions based on the money that we have brought in. So on it, I think there's been like six payments, I believe there's six or seven. And we're still waiting for a couple more to be able to make up what was proposed for this budget. We're very close to it right now, but be aware of that's happening as well. So it's not a matter of like, let's spend all the money in spring, because the reality is, it's like, it comes in buckets through the year in order to be able to fulfill what that full amount is. So I want to make sure that's very clear, and we're definitely like checking penny for penny that comes in to make sure it fulfills what it is. So it's not all at once that we get it. It's about, I would say, seven to nine checks through the year. It could be more, it could be less, but depending how much money they have been able to collect, that's how much money it is. So people are paying later, not able to pay. That also affects the amount that comes in through the city. And, okay, so that, go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
No, I appreciate that, Mayor, it's very clear. So hopefully, this is an estimate that we are estimating right now for FY23. It could go up or it could be lower than that. The next section, we have the license and the permits. So we're looking, we estimated 711, $700,100, which is a 0%, almost close to the last year. And so there is no changes, and hopefully, we will be collecting the same revenue for this section, which is listed from 4206 to 4205, the item number, you could see it on the screen too.
There's a question now, should we wait?
So, Kate, I will say like, wait for him to finish the tax revenue bracket, and then we can ask questions. So that way we don't ask one by one.
All right. And the next section, we have intergovernmental revenue, which we're looking at almost $400,000 or 369,603.40, which is 5% more than last year, FY22. And the revenue is SHA, State Highway User Revenue and Other Revenue that is listed from 4301 to 4305. All right, so the next section, we have charges for services. We're looking at or estimated 24,500, which is same amount that we received last year. So hopefully, we get the same thing this year. And the section is 4400 to 4404. After that, we have fines and forfeitures, which is 9% more than last year. So we're hoping to get 785,400, which is, we're looking at the speed camera, because the speed camera is the one that we, we're hoping to have 50% more than last year, almost. Because right now, we have collected 50672 so far until January, and we have received more payments. So this is a number that we're hoping we get to 750 next year. And the next one, we have the miscellaneous, which is, we drop over here minus 27, 27%. And the main reason was there are some bank interest and solar, solar on the city. That was, actually, that was budgeted for $15,000, but I have looked at the numbers and the money that we received exactly. So, so far, we got 3,654, and we're hoping to get to 7,500, because I have the history of the council, that $15,000, that's why we have a big drop over there. And then the last, well, this is, this is the last, was the last section, I'm sorry. So the total operating revenue, we're looking at 7,958,272, which is 12% more than last year. And I would like to ask Ron, if he wants to add anything to this sheet, or are we good? Or let Mayor and Council ask us questions?
Well, other than to add the section for the grants, I don't know.
Yeah, the last section, the last section that we're going to go, it's the grant that, which is not included in the operating budget. So last year, we had COPS grant, which was $41,000. So we're hoping to get same number. And then COVID was, was last year, but we have ARPA money this time, which we have received, 2.717833. And hopefully, by August of this year, we should receive the second, which is the 50% of 5.4 million dollars. And we have the Spring Park, which is not listed, because right now, there is a conversation, I'm sorry. And, and also the Memorial Park, we have two grants over there. One of them is $200,000, and the other one is $100,000, a total of, you know, $300,000. And then we have a bond for the police, the basement, which is another $300,000. And we can start working and using this money this summer, hopefully. And the last one, we have the CBT grant 1899, which we will be receiving $142,000. So we have overall 4% increase in our grants. And that brings our budget to be at the position 9% more than last year, including the grants.
So I want to make sure we address what I was asking earlier, so that the committee is aware. As you guys heard through the general fund revenues, right? The grants are listed separately, including ARPA. So they only listed the first half that we have, and once we get the other half, we will do a budget amendment to the budget to include the additional, correct?
Thank you. Yes, well, yes, yes, and if I could.
Of course, go ahead.
We budgeted the first half of the Arbor Grant for the $2.7 million for this fiscal year. Very little of that money has been spent so far. So we will not recognize all of that revenue this year. For '23, we're budgeting the additional 2.7, but in the second half of that money. What actually gets recognized as revenue is only what we spent. So it's possible that some of that revenue will leak into a future fiscal year, because we have until '25?
'26.
'26. To spend all of that 5.4 million dollars. It's also important to, to understand that that is new spending. If we didn't have the ARPA money, we wouldn't be spending on the various initiatives that are approved for ARPA. And that's why we don't include it in our operating budget, where it's not permanent spending that we're creating.
Perfect, and thank you for clarifying that that point is correctly. The other thing regarding ARPA to have in mind, that yes, it could be spent until 2026. However, it has to be like properly allocated by 2024, so that way it will be able to reflect on our '24 budget, '25, '26. If there's a couple of items that are extending beyond that, but it has to be sealed and contracted by '24, and you can make the payments to fulfill your obligation until 2026. But that will mean that by '24, we will know where we're spending any money that's like for the next year. So that will help also in the budget when it comes to, one, having received the money, and two, where is this money going? Because it cannot be changed. Once you allocate it by 2024, that's it, it's sticking until 2026 and whatever penny has been on it. So Council, you have read, you have heard, I read through of the general fund as well as the grants. I'm going to open up the floor right now for questions. And I'm going to ask you to please avoid having a back and forward, ask your questions, and the team will be able to answer. We will have the same ruling as we did earlier, first round is, you know, three minutes, second round, two. If we need to go to a third one, one minute, so we could get the move on it. And remember, this is not your final conversation on this. If you have any other questions, you can always like ask our city manager or email them regarding like what question you have. All right, so Jimmy, I'm going to open up the floor with you, followed by Jared, and then Luke.
Just going from bottom to the top. The last line, CBT, yes, what is that?
CBT is the grant that Department of Public Works applied with Chesapeake Bay Trust and PG County. It's a stormwater management. We are planning to have more bio retention and rain gardens, and this money is located for 38th and 33rd Street. And Rocio La Torre, the Director of Public Works, will be handling this. And we got this one in 2021. But the process is the money has not come to us unless we finish all the reporting documents. And hopefully, in '23, we will have that one.
Yeah, so can I ask for one more thing as a point of clarity? When you guys are speaking on a line, can you guys address the number like 4100, so that way we can follow through? It makes it a lot easier, because now we're looking through the page. So if we can follow with that, it will help our team. Go ahead, Jimmy.
But anyway, 4720 on Memorial Park and the basement renovations.
Yes.
So we have it down as revenue in this current year, but we also have it in next year. So is it like, we haven't spent the money, or is that $500,000 together? Or is it $300,000 altogether in revenue? Because this year really isn't being spent, so it's for next year.
Okay.
That's confusing.
Yes, well, I appreciate that, because the memorial park, we have the consultant that is working on the final drawing and the permits. We have not spent anything, but we have the extension for the grants for both of them, a total of $300,000. And then the police basement, the same thing. That grant is, the deadline is the 28, which I was really surprised, which is six years from now. But I have asked chief to start working on it because of the inflation, and we want to make sure that we use that money on time.
So you didn't quite answer the question, which I understand is confusing. Is the total grant 500,000 money, we're going to be receiving only 300,000? Is it 3,000 being, it's only 3,000? So actually, the money revenue would get, have we, okay. It's somewhat confusing, because it's listed twice.
I can clarify.
Okay, Luke.
Okay, so in, when you get a grant, sometimes you expect to spend it in a certain year. So for FY22, that figure was 200, because we didn't get the 100 from Atha that I had applied for. So we had 200 in revenue and then 200 in expenses and grant expenses. We never did anything with it. So this FY23, you have the grant revenue, which is now 300, because we got another 100 last year in grant, in grant funding for it. And then on the expense side, you grant expense of 300 on this as well.
So I'm going up now on line 4500, parking violations, it seems to go like up and down. So last year was, this, this current year was $200,000, and next fiscal year is only 28,000.
Yes, thank you for asking this. Both of this, 4500 and 4501, I'm working with the police chief, because we have some vendors that they have not reported to us. So hopefully, by next work session, which is April 19, we will have a clear position. Right now, this is the money we have received, and I think that this number is going to be corrected, $28,000. We just put the number over there right now. But we are working with the vendors to clarify and make sure that all the deposits that should be rendered to the city and make sure that all the information and the history of the account. So if you bear with us, we definitely have some good numbers by April 19.
And last question is line 4201, business occupancy licenses. Is this the pass-through that goes to MRBA, or is this additional licenses that the city gets beyond that?
No, this is, this is additional one, the one that you're talking is the CDMA. And that one also, we have, we are working on it, but this is additional line item that if we get any revenue, which we show it.
So CDMA is a necessary revenue?
No, not, yeah, not yet, because we're working with Larry and we're working with Almo. And the city has not paid the MRBA share since 2019. The last payment was $14,000, and right now, we're trying to pay 20 and 21 and 22.
Thank you.
So just to keep you guys in mind, our directors are going to be here. They're also who answer those questions, if they're very specific, because I don't want to, I don't want us to answer like a thousand questions on these two pages. And then they're here, and they could directly access it. If it's something that has to be with a specific department, then I'd be able to also answer if you have any more clarity on it, okay?
Thanks.
Just, just, just keep that in mind.
I have a broad one and line item stuff later. I guess, you know, this year, we're back out of COVID. Well, one hopes, one hopes.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, things are more returning to normal. I guess it's hard to obviously forecast the way some things like fees and revenue and stuff like that. When you all were preparing this, When you all were preparing this, um, how did you kind of, I guess, forecast what? For, and that may differ on a lot of these items, some like business fees versus uh, speed camera revenue versus what the statement provide. How did you all kind of take your best guess for FY twenty-three?
Okay, if you look at the line item that we have FY twenty-two actual, which is between July twenty-one to June.
January.
January, I'm sorry, January twenty-two. And we look at the trends, so, and look at the numbers that we have received, and just estimating based on that. And I'll let Ron also weigh a little more for you guys.
Yeah, the vast majority of these line items were done by trend analysis.
Okay.
Uh, the one big exception to that is the real estate taxes.
Right.
And that came right off that analysis that, that the county gave us, you know, with the new assessable base and the existing tax rates. You know, we just plug those numbers right in. Uh, and of course, that number um, is probably going to change um, based on the council's decision about new tax rates.
And thanks for that. I just want to be clear, I first go on council, I'm trying to understand the process, not, not questioning your, not questioning your figures, so thank you.
But the, the vast majority of them are done by trend analysis.
Okay, thanks.
Any?
Nope, that, that's all I have.
Luke, go ahead.
Yeah, um, uh, looking at line items, four-two oh seven and four-two oh eight, tree removal permit mitigation and impervious fees.
Yes.
One of the requests from the tree commission, and one of the things Brian worked on before he left, was to have a line item in the public works budget that would be called Tree Replacement Fund. And it would equal the revenue received from tree removal permits and mitigation impervious fees. So that's something we could do, and the line item would equal twelve hundred dollars because that's the one thousand dollars from the impervious fees and twelve hundred dollars from the tree removals. And then you could just subtract the twelve hundred dollars from the eighty thousand, oh, sorry, from the um, no, not the eighty thousand, you could subtract it from the tree, the tree purchases line item.
Five thousand though.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
So you, that would be, that would be thirty-eight hundred, and then you'd have a tree replacement fund of twelve hundred, and so it would equal five thousand, which was the tree commission's fight. They would just see that you're getting the money from the urban forest code for the tree replacement fund.
We'll do that.
Um, yeah.
It's difficult.
Sorry, um, then, um, I think it would be helpful, and I, I think Mayor has mentioned this before. For the forty-seven twenty line item for Memorial Park, I think it's helpful to change the title of that because we're really doing so much more than just the park. Um, and so I would recommend that we change the title to Streetscape redesign of thirty-three hundred blocks of Rhode Island Avenue and Perry Streets, including Memorial Park.
Okay.
Just because the project's so much bigger than just the park.
The park itself is a small portion of it.
Yeah, definitely, you're right, and I appreciate that.
And that's it.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kamali, can I ask you guys a question? Because we'll make it a lot easier follow-through. Forty-seven twenty is listed on one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different line items. Can we have something that identifies them differently, even if it's internal for us? But even if it's forty-one, twenty, ABC, whatever you guys want, but forty, uh, because that way we'll separate them on it, at least like when we speak to them. We could talk to you specifically about that. That also helps like in case we need to do a budget amendment or anything, we know specifically. The other thing is like some of these grants are specifically for that, for that location, like the police base or whatever. So if we have them separately in line item, we know exactly where we're at, because the last thing I need is for us to like bleed into a different line item because it's the same pocket. So police basement is just for police basement, it cannot go for any other park uh, moving, uh, moving through. The other thing, uh, for forty-seven twenty, to make sure we clarify, it is uh, Spring Park, and it was Peace Garden, not Peace Park. Because that's confusing a lot of people, we've gotten a couple of feedback on it. So it will be Spring Park slash the, the Peace Garden. And so the name of the park is not being changed, it's just like, you know, it's being created a peace garden. I think that's, that was what, what would change uh, for uh, Potts Hall. Uh, it's Potts House Welcome Center, not Civic Center. Uh, can we make sure we made that um, that changes well on it? Um, because that's um, that's a route that we're, that we are in.
Right.
So um, other than that, I will leave, I will leave it out. The other thing um, that I'm hearing good news about it, because like I said, we were, um, we've been working very hard trying to get our HURs uh, back. Uh, that's the highway state portion of the gas that's supposed to come to the municipalities, that when it was the reception, it was completely taken out of us. And that's the reason why, out of a sudden, a budget went from, we have a budget to collapsing completely because it was a lot of money that was no longer there for us as municipalities. And for many years, they didn't give us a share, right? Eventually, they gave us some share, and where, uh, the news that we're hearing is that they're gonna be able to uh, increase the share, not to the hundred percent that we want, but they should be able to increase. And they're um, they're working also to make sure that the sunsets uh, do not end in twenty twenty-five, but continue going on. At the same time, there's a group working because uh, electronic and hybrid cars are coming around, which means like the, the gas tax that we get is gonna go down regardless. So there's a group already in MML working on making sure, so that could be for distant projected future budgets, working on what would, what will be uh, the offsets for us to be able to get some funding when it comes to uh, gas or, or whatever way the cars utilize. So be in the lookout for, leave it as it is for right now, because unless it's like on stone instead, and they tell us like, yes, there's a change. Um, we might see at least ideally some income increase on HUR, at least a small percentage more. But that'll be a good news for us, I just wanted to make sure, bring that to your attention.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Okay, and if there's nothing else to add in this pitch, council, go ahead, Ron.
I, I just wanted to assure you about something.
Yes.
Line forty-seven twenties in, in our general ledger, it's just called grant revenue. We, we assign a sub-account for each specific grant, so we are tracking these things separately. Um, and we do the same on, on the expense side, uh, and so none of these grant revenues are combined.
Perfect, thank you for that. So now just put the numbers attached differently?
Yes.
Definitely.
Appreciate that. Garden, garden. Exactly. So um, so just to point something, usually, um, and I know it's a new concept, but usually Luke uh, has been tasked uh, since twenty seventeen. The task of being our, our free breaker, uh, backup keeper of like the various discussions, same changes that we have. So that way the staff is doing it, he's doing it, then he shares them, so that would make sure um, to facilitate some of the work as well.
Thanks.
So.
This year, as opposed to by hand, so earlier you'd have a lawyer on hand doing calculations.
I know, with a big white board along with it, let me ask you. I know, I missed the whiteboard, what's going on there, Luke? You should bring it back. All right, so council, is there any other questions regarding this? Mr. Kamali, any others right here? In top of you. I know, because I was like, I did the same thing, I started looking everywhere else. Um, is there anything else to add about these two pages, or are we moving on to the next one? Go ahead.
Just had one quick question, on the speed camera violations, what's the question for the okay, it's collected growing up so much, growing so much?
Lots of people speeding.
And.
I think it's Jared Stoffel, is his name?
We have collected.
Yes.
Up to January of this year.
Okay.
Five hundred thousand dollars, which was budgeted last year. And right now, we have received more payments. And by uh, April nineteen, I will update that number for the during formation. And that's why we're looking at seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is right there.
There.
Yes.
And just, sorry. And so like what, what percent, like what's, do we get, we get a percentage of?
Yes.
Violation, right?
What happens, uh, we're working with a company called Census. So Census is the vendor.
Right.
So they determine the cost, like we, we, we go through the tickets.
Right.
Police department approves all the tickets, send it to them, then they start collecting the money. So they, they provide all the fees that they have collected, they get their portion, and then they will send us the net payment.
Okay.
Which we get that, and I am looking at the contract right now and see what, what portion they're, you know, taking.
Right.
And we're looking to shop around and make sure that Chief and I are working on that.
So two more questions on that. Do we have to share some of that with S H A because it's on?
No, no, and if you recall.
No, 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 if you, I'm just trying to understand them.
Last week, when we had the meeting.
Yep.
Yep.
Peter promised us, and Chief, I had Chief to send them an email to replace the sign.
Yep.
So it's gonna be a residential, then the income is gonna be, go up twenty-four seven. So, because right now there is a certain time between eight to six o'clock.
During school time is when the cameras working on that.
And then the last thing is, and, and I'm a big favor of something like this because it helps slow down traffic from almost entirely people speeding and blowing through our community unsafely. Just want to be clear, um, we are limited in what we can use some of that revenue for, correct?
Exactly.
And what is the balance?
It's just the public safety and whatever mayor is gonna weigh in and give you more information.
Thank you.
But I would say, uh, I know that you usually thought it's like all this money is being used in police, as a matter of fact, we've been able to use this on our, on our sidewalks.
Yes.
So we have like, you know, when we had the budget, um, uh, budget, right, so we had it to like slim a lot of it. A lot of speed camera use was used in our streets and sidewalks, so we got to continue building upon it. Uh, so all of that, it could be utilized, and we have been able to maximize it in that way. So that will be, have been able to stop, so we continue yearly like increasing how many sidewalks we continue to build. Maybe that's considered safety, it will fall on it, we have been using a lot in roads and highways, if we need to like, for whatever reason, by a police start switching into hybrid, that could be used, any police um, staff could use, but it's been used heavily on the, on the side of the community to be able to have the uh, the spaces be transferable.
As long as, mayor, can I say, just, you know, as long as it's a safety issue, we could use that money. So, and also, in order to implement that program, we need to have some officers to approve those tickets. So those hours, like eight hours, nine hours per day that they go through those tickets.
Yeah.
Is gonna come out from that money. Also, I have proposed five hundred thousand dollars for the sidewalk, and hopefully, mayor and council will allocate. That's what we're looking, speed camera revenue, for the public safety, as mayor said, to alleviate those trip hazards.
It's incredibly helpful clarity and for me and also for anyone watching.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, okay, um, we have opened the second round with Jared talking again. Jimmy, the floor's yours, and Luke, you have another shot, go ahead.
Just a question, how many speed cameras we have, uh, three parts? Do we, uh, where are they, and do we notify the community, and can we put it on the website so people actually know the community where speed cameras are, just I think.
Okay.
Helpful to people saying they don't know.
All right, the speed cameras are located on Rhode Island Avenue, going north and south. You could see it almost by the.
Thirty-seventh Street.
Yeah, thirty-seventh.
Thirty-seventh Place.
Yeah, yeah, thirty-seventh Place, thank you, mayor. And uh, we do have signage over there, but we're gonna have that information. Pink, I will ask Pink to put it on the website to inform the community. And uh, the hours right now is the school hours, but we had a meeting, mayor and Jared, uh, had a meeting with S H A last week. So we're planning to replace the signs and put it as a residential area, then we can.
Twenty-four hours.
Exactly, twenty-four hours and monitoring the speeding people.
Yeah, we usually don't tell, we usually don't, people is only during school hours because people after hours do speed. But because they see the camera there, they slow down a little bit. Um, so originally, when the program was set up, I believe it was three or six months that it was like, um, uh, what's it called, notice to like send out, so only like warnings were submitted, right? There was no citations in order to notify, and they went through the whole process of like announcing and everything else um, in order to make sure people knew that it was there, go ahead.
Um, what do we, so we only, we only right now find during school hours?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's only between eight to six, but the meeting that we had with S H A last week, they said that they're gonna, you know, go ahead and allow us to, to revise the sign because the signs, it says the school, you know, timeframe, so we're gonna replace it with a residential twenty-four step.
Okay, and then uh, we issue a fine, and what um, what, what speed triggers a ticket? No, no, that's not for me, that's not for me.
Twelve miles.
Eleven and eleven and up.
Yeah.
We're gonna lose the extra revenue.
I know, thank you, guys. Now, people are gonna know that after.
I'm giving back to my.
They could speed and they could like race that sixty miles and up.
No, 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 and I'm also asking because the speed, especially pedestrian, that you impact has a severe impact on like your, if you survive or injured.
I think it's eleven and up.
Okay.
I know, because like DC always charges me at eleven and up.
Twelve, okay, thank you, that's very clear.
But, you know.
All right, perfect, uh, but thank you, guys, for like selling our cigarettes, and now we're not gonna have the revenue for high streets and sidewalks. Uh, go ahead, Luke. All right, so Jared promised to speed on his way out to like make up for those comments and like give the revenue for sidewalks.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you'll be surprised, I mean, people sleep, uh, do live in our town.
We have some.
So you have quite a, quite a few uh, people that do live in our town. Um, and that thing goes for like the areas where we don't have speed camera. The police department did um, did a study, literally sat there and just ran uh, tags, and a lot of them were residents. So that's when we like talk about stuff, and we have all the residential only signs, we could put on those blogs. But if our own residents are speeding, it's not gonna stop, even if I put a barricade to just have a residence through it. However, it's still fun and enjoyable. Um, we have a comment, this is for Park Correspondent to say grant, which is, okay, the thirty-three thousand for Park Correspondent to the DC's grant, which is it, oh man, I'm.
Expenses.
Expenses under economic development, name change should be restrictive enough to know the difference. Okay, that's for what we're apart. Oh, like, yeah, you missed it, Ron, like, uh, Luke had a whole entire name for it.
Yes.
Uh, but he hasn't, he's not, so that has been addressed.
And it has been uh, also noted in the economic developments because uh, Ron Hopkins is working on that for the extension. So we have it over there, I believe, we have shown it as expenses for that.
Perfect.
Under that.
Thank you so much. All right, so, um, I'll, hold, hold you, hold on, hold on, hold on one second, Hopkins, okay. So council, you guys will state your piece, I'm gonna open it up to the, to the community. So uh, same rules as uh, the previous uh, hearing. You have up to three minutes to say your name and block number, make your comment, please stick to the minute, three minutes or less. Um, and if you're referencing a specific line item, let us know what line item is, an example, forty-two oh six. So that way we are in the same page as you are. So we're gonna go first to the Zoom, and then we're gonna follow with Facebook. And our, uh, we have Melissa, uh, Pink and Jared working uh, along in the, along on this side of the communication aspect. So uh, Pink, who do we have first?
No one on Facebook.
Nobody on Facebook have a Zoom? Okay, if you wish to speak, just like write your name and we'll call upon you, okay? All right, so I think this is so light, my, my poor eyes are hurting.
Right now, only staff is on Zoom.
But what I'm, what I'm asking is um, if they have something to say, just write their name, okay? Uh, so we have numbers to the community, nobody else to speak, Facebook, we're clear? Uh, Mr. Hopkins, you have something to say, or do you wanna just hold for your line, for your um, for your department that's coming up?
So we could get. I have something to say briefly.
Go ahead.
So I did hear Luke's description of uh, line item forty-seven twenty about the whole Memorial Park project, and I think that's good and comprehensive. It's just that it should be designated as such because that three hundred thousand just corresponds to the Memorial Park portion of the grant. And I think ARPA monies will also gonna be added to the whole Streetscape um, project at Memorial Park site. So that's why I asked for the clarification.
So just to clarify, the D H C D grant was for, the, the three hundred thousand dollars specifically for the grant was for the, the entire project, it was for Rhode Island Avenue, Perry Street, Memorial Park. The, that project costs more than three hundred thousand dollars, the two hundred thousand we're getting from D H C D, it goes to demolition and something else. But it was for.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk along, yeah. And then the, the, the half a half of that, the one hundred thousand dollars goes to the Rhode Island Avenue sidewalks and the park itself, the, the stone, the rods, the stones and everything like that. So it's, it is, the grant itself did include all of it, the redesign of the Rhode Island Avenue side, Perry Street side. The redesign of the Rhode Island Avenue side, Perry Street side, um, thirty-third street side and, and Memorial Park itself. So we can change the line item if it's on your, in your department as well to correspond to the line item change.
So I will say this is more descriptive. We could definitely work on that like backend because it's not, you know, you guys will, will take care of that. As much as I love you guys, we have a budget to run. We haven't even gone into the departments.
Yes.
Okay, um, also for the residents, they are like, uh, if you need any specifications on what the line items are, there are summaries after each one of them that is the number and what it looks like. If there's something you have a question, like I said, name the number. Uh, example fifty-four oh four, fifty-five oh six. So that way like we're able to address your question, but also if you have any questions, you go with, um, email the city manager who is, um, in charge of this entire process. Okay, so Mr. Kamali, having gone through that, what's the next section you would like to?
Next section, we have mayor and council expenditure for mayor and council.
Yeah, and to be clear, that's not our whole entire salary, okay? This is very clear because somebody assumed that that was like how much we're getting paid each. I was like, no, we're low. Okay.
All right, so, uh, everything is, is same as last year except the election cost, which I have shared the information with the mayor and council. So we're raising it from five thousand last year to ten thousand. Actually, last year it was not anything. We had to do the budget amendment because of the special election that we have. So for this year, for next year, hopefully there is another election, so we're looking at ten thousand dollars overall. So, uh, the budget for that department has increased six percent due to the election cost. That's all we have for mayor and council. I will be able to answer your question.
So, uh, council, who would like to go? And usually I call you guys. Luke, you look interested.
No, pass on me. I was just informing everyone, um, something, so.
Thank you. So, um, council, the, uh, if you want to run through the whole entire thing and if they have questions, they'll ask you at the end, but.
Okay.
I didn't know either, because I think right now they're just thinking about it. Listen.
Sorry, I need my attention directed. Where exactly we are?
We are.
We are at the mayor and council.
Okay.
Section.
Yes, section. So right now we go on department by department to show the expenditures.
We just did the first, the five hundred five oh four, basically the same.
Sorry, I see we're on the screen. I'm unclear where we are.
No, 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 it should be mayor and council right there. Yeah, that's mayor and council department.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it in my.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I see it on the screen.
All right, there are all the pages, it's, and it should be the next one.
All right, yeah. After the main expenditures, you go to mayor and council after all those pages that we have, right?
Yeah. Yeah, page numbers would really help.
No, we'll, we'll take.
No, it's, it's okay, guys. It's okay.
So I have a question for you guys. I know we went to mayor and council, but is there, um, um, skip right through, uh, general fund expenses, the line item by line item?
No, what we do is, uh, I'm sorry, I thought that we did all the departments and then.
And then we could go back to that?
No, uh, then the information is presented mayor and council. I will give you the final number, the summary. I will read it again.
Okay, so I think that confusion is because we all went to a general fund line, line item by line item. Because that's usually the way it goes and then we'll figure out what is it that we have questions on this and then we go to like each of the departments.
However you wanna do it.
Go ahead.
Um, so maybe if, no, actually, I think, yeah, just go department by department and then we can come back.
That was.
I was thinking, I was, I was, yeah, we could get that, that we could get that directly out of the way and then we'll come back to this one. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Hold on, give me one minute to get us all in the same, in the same little screen. I know it's like, that's a lot of pages for our little budget.
The general fund expenses tab, that just rolls up all these.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll go back if you have a question specifically, so that way it goes through it. Yeah, so this we go through it, so that way we know like, and then we're gonna, we're fine. We're in the same page right now. We are at, um, the page is titled City Hall and that's where we should be, correct?
Yeah, the next one is this city hall.
Okay.
I had a question with mayor and council.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hold on one, it's only one page. Can he go through all of it? And then we could go back and he could ask, answer the question. So he's gonna be able to be from five thousand to line item fifty-five ninety-seven, so it's a couple, it's not that many line items, okay? Then we'll go back, so. You're missing one, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa. Melissa, you could see me one more over there. Your vision is a lot better than mine. Okay, so, go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
So, I'm trying to understand how we're gonna move forward because I thought that we're gonna do the section by section or you want to go line by line? I think it's gonna take so much time if line by line.
I think department, oh, I.
We're going to city council, mayor and council first.
Right, right, right. And I think you can just, I think the way we did it with Brian and Melinda was just highlight the sections and then we ask questions as to plan.
That was like the second, I mean, today we could do that, but eventually we're gonna have to go line item by line item because we should be able to read it and, and go through it. That's usually, remember like the biggest meetings we have, that's usually what they're in, that they're like three hours on their own because we basically.
By line item and then we'll get it out of the way.
Yeah, so that's, that's it. So we usually have like meetings where we have like nothing but this. So because the last meeting, we basically like touched it for like ten minutes and we were out. Now we're gonna have to go in a little bit more in depth on it.
But you don't have to explain every.
No.
No, 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 I just have to read it when we're like in time.
Yes.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, because I was just watching the March twenty-seventh last year. Yeah, and.
It's a different page you're on. I know that, I was in that page too.
No, oh, well, we're not on that page.
No, we're all in different pages. So is this one, right?
Mayor and council.
It's that one, though. So Melissa's gonna help. Cause like, I, that's why she came over and corrected my, because she realized I was in the wrong one too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
We'll get through it, go ahead.
Mayor, ma- mayor and council. The first section is the pay, line item number five thousand, regular pay. There is no changes, it's just the zero percent. The benefits, starting line fifty-one hundred, which is F I C A expenses, dental expenses, unemployment insurance, retirement contribution. Fifteen, fifteen percent more than last year because that's something normal that, you know, because of the expenses. And then we go to the professional services, five-one-two-six, same, same number, which is one thousand dollars, zero increase. Then we go to other services and charges, the travel expenses, same as last year, six thousand dollars. Historic, historic preservation tax credit, it's gonna be thirty-five hundred, no changes. The city homeowner's tax credit is gonna be thirty-two thousand dollars, no, no changes. Veterans slash L T R tax credit is gonna be seventy-five hundred dollars, zero increase. Line item fifty-five-one-three, it's gonna be flowers and gifts, same number, which is two hundred fifty dollars, zero increase. So the total is gonna be forty-nine thousand two hundred fifty. And then we have a community activities, which is, uh, the city sponsor meetings, line fifty-five oh five, no increase, fifteen hundred. Fifty-five-three-zero, that's gonna be the conference and the convention expenses, stays as F Y twenty-two, five thousand dollars. Then we go association dues. We have increased that one from eighteen eighty-six to twenty-two hundred because the fee goes up. And, um, then the last one is election cost, which is ten thousand dollars for this year. We have upcoming election next year. And, uh, there is a forty percent increase. And the total expense for the mayor and council with six percent increase is gonna be hundred fifteen four oh nine point eight-three.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is not an increase on us, it's just an increase of the various things in during the elections. And part of the reason why the elections are definitely more costly now, uh, is because we have to rent the nature center to make it more A V A, um, available. Uh, so that's part of the cause that, um, we have, um, we have added to it. So I'm gonna open up the first, because I have a couple of questions on this and I have to add one more thing on it. Um, Jimmy, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, I, I think line fifty-two twelve is probably underestimated, it's probably gonna be about twenty thousand dollars. I kind of counted the people who are be covered by that.
You mean fifty-five twelve?
Veteran.
Five twelve, correct.
Veteran.
Probably gonna be twenty thousand.
So that's an increase, uh.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Last year it was budgeted for seventy-five hundred. I'm sorry, mayor.
Go ahead.
Just wanna explain to Jimmy. And, uh, so far we have paid almost four thousand dollars. So, and we are almost at the end of here, so if you guys want me to increase it.
I guess the, we revised the, the ordinance and it's gonna be changed, so.
Okay, I got you.
Then we changed it by ten years.
Yeah, so.
So whoever didn't qualify before definitely qualified.
Okay, I counted it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's if every single person applies, yeah. Anything else, Jimmy? Okay, thank you for that.
Thanks for that, Jimmy. Um, and just a quick question for you, for clarity for me, um, why do we put the tax credits in the mayor and council?
Yeah.
Okay.
You started here and I was gonna ask mayor and council if they allow me to move it to.
Okay, just wanna, wanna be clear, those are not tax credits for mayor and council.
The city hall, it should be under city hall.
Okay.
And I don't know what.
Should be a decrease of revenue, I would think, but maybe not.
It should be somewhere else now for us. That's the reason why I started the, the sentence with, uh, this is not money we're getting extra because it gives the illusion that.
Yeah.
We, among the five of us, usually we have a budget of fifty thousand, but it's nowhere near what it looks like, um. Okay, uh.
Thank you, that's it.
Got it? Uh, Luke, do you have a question?
No, um, I would just, whatever recommendation finance has for where to put the tax credits, we should just go with that.
Yeah.
I, I think it makes sense to put it in city hall.
City hall.
Yeah.
That's the overall.
Just for the, if someone's looking at this, I would be very confused.
Cause we have to pay that city hall and I'd like to have it in the city.
You don't think it's like, um, line item fifty-one oh two?
Fifty-one oh two.
Fifty-one oh two.
Dental.
Oh, um, I don't need name, but you could send it to me if you need to, like, because I know we don't get insurance. None of us.
Right, that's why it's zero. We, we should have it hidden that line, I don't know why.
It looks like, it's, did I miss one? Cause it looks like thirty-six thou- three thousand six hundred.
That's social security, FICA.
Oh.
Counter.
Underneath, okay, my apology, I missed it by one. All right, perfect. The, um, the other thing is like, I don't see it here and I definitely would like to recommend to put it, put it back on, it says city sponsor meetings in the past, like each council member will get at least a thousand dollars, a thousand five hundred to be able to run meetings or programs, so that we're able to get help and that was removed two years ago. Um.
Are you talking about fifty-five oh five?
I believe it's fifty-five oh five.
Yes.
Um, so this is a thousand five hundred, somebody used to be like at least that for each of us in case, yeah. So, um, we could do, uh, I mean, you guys could do whatever you guys want, but I know for a fact, like, I'm fine with a thousand five hundred for myself and a thousand for each of the council members, so they could do a thousand five hundred. But that allows for us to be able to run some, not just the meetings, but other programming assumptions, like it helped, um, we were trying to like, um, upset some of it. I know for the, you know, in the past, uh, Mayor Miles, Brian, uh, Chevali and all of us have been able to use a program. I know like Luke utilized it when it came to senior, um, for bringing the seniors to do like, um, to see a theater night, right? It allowed for us to be able to do other stuff because at this point I feel like it fell down and so we have to go and like basically beg a committee to do something. And I think we definitely need to not be there. I think that we definitely need to be like, if there's program you wanna help do and lead, we should be able to like, um, put, uh, allow us to be able to do that. Yes.
Fifteen hundred dollars per council member.
What do you guys think?
Well.
You wanna do a thousand or a thousand five hundred?
Thousand per council member and then, wait, huh? A thousand per member would be five thousand, right?
Five thousand, I thought.
I will ask if you guys could give me five hundred dollars more because I have to, I have to take up a couple more stuff added to me with the things that I do.
Fifty-five hundred.
Please, yeah, that's the only thing because this year was, it has been tough.
Thank you.
All right, if you could go ahead and add that, Mr. Kamali.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Jimmy, go ahead.
Uh, unemployment insurance, I'm confused about that. Uh, elected officials eligible for unemployment when you, uh, so I'm not sure what, what's unemployment. I didn't, I didn't think.
Line item fifty-one oh six.
Oh, six. And what have we done in the past? I, I've never, if you're not elected, I don't think you're eligible for unemployment.
Yeah, yes, I, it, that may be the case and yet we have had expenses coming through our payroll. But that's an excellent question, uh, something that we should look into. And if we've been paying for you guys all along, maybe we need to stop that if you're not eligible, so.
I mean, I, I, I never heard of elected official being.
We should follow the same trends as.
Yeah, how about until you guys figure out what it is, just let it be. Keep it there and then we'll figure out what it looks like.
Come back with some.
Yeah, and I, I, um, I know this won't qualify to me, but seeing that we have an election year next year, um, uh, I am gonna bring up a resolution to have council do three percent or whatever the cost of living is. Because every year the passes, the cost of living continues to increase, council salaries continue to decrease. Um, and that reality is like some of us are spending a lot of time here. And this isn't using increase, but at least like give us that, like the level up of the whatever little stipend that we get. Okay? So, um, keep that in mind, um, you know, depending what council decides, um, we'll, we'll see if that needs, that number needs to move up just a little bit. Go ahead, Luke.
I know retirement contribution. We've had questions and issues about that in the past where, I don't know if it was contributions were not made on behalf of the mayor and council, but they should have been. And I just wanna know the status of that and how to be access to know.
There was one.
Oh, you know, that was like, let me do, okay, we're, we're, we're in on. Hold on, Mr. Kamali, I'll just make a quick announcement on. Okay, so thank you for joining us, uh, back and we apologize for the fortunate, um, set of events. Um, if you, uh, have, if you need a request to join our Zoom meeting, um, please, uh, send a request. If not, we'll ask you to please view it through Facebook, view it through Zoom, but we're gonna make sure that, um, we're trying to keep track of who comes in as well. All right, uh, thank you to our team for mobilizing very fast. I know it goes very, um, it's very overwhelming and uncomfortable, but it, with technology comes trouble at times. All right, so mayor and council, uh, mayor and council, um, council members, anything else to add to this section or C? So line forty-one oh seven.
Okay, mayor.
Is most likely gonna get an increase based on, um, council, uh, seeking what that looks like and what it will mean on it, um, okay? So a nice memo explaining what it looks like, what it means, the text and stuff like that will definitely help us, so that will be, so. Um, Luke, you are taking care of this extra increases in different locations, right? So fifty-one oh seven just added us like, most likely in an increase, okay? Um, any questions from Facebook or social media at all? Okay. All right, Mr. Kamali, anything else to add to that? Do we move on to the next, um?
No, I appreciate that we could go to city hall if you allow.
So city hall, wait, let me make sure we all get in the same, okay, it's not too bad, two pages over, right? How about we do that for right now? Just let us know how many pages after the last page, so that we all try to at least assimilate it, okay?
All right.
So moving, so move two pages over, you'll find city hall. All right, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours and council will just ask question one, um, Mr. Kamali has done the read through.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The first section is pay. So the wages, wages, we have, uh, line item five thousand, which is, uh, minus seven percent less than last year. Four hundred thirty-four, five twenty-three point twenty-six. Over time, it, uh, it has forty, line item five zero zero one. And we have zero percent increase, so the total for that section is four hundred thirty-nine twen- two hundred twenty-three point twenty-six with a total of minus seven percent or seven percent decrease, I'm sorry. All right, then we go to the employee benefits and insurance from line fifty-one hundred to, to fifty-one oh seven. We have a total of one ninety-seven, four hundred twenty-two with fifty-three percent increase, which includes the li- the fecal life insurance expenses and the dental medical. which includes the li- the fecal life insurance expenses and the dental, medical, workman's comp, unemployment and retirement contribution for the employees of the city hall. And the next section, we have material and supplies, starting from line fifty-two hundred to fifty-two, three. So, and looking at this line, we decreased the office supply, which was twelve thousand dollars, seven thousand. Uh, and we've been monitoring our office supplies with minus forty-three or forty-three percent decrease. The postage was, which is the machine that we use for downstairs, and that's on the same rate, twenty-five hundred with zero increase. Line fifty-two oh two, which is the computer equipment and supplies, we are using the same number with the zero increase in case if any computer breaks, so that's just the cushion for that line item. Then we have fifty-two oh three, material and supplies, because we have fifty-two hundred, so I made that line zero, because all the materials, office supply comes from line fifty-two hundred. And the total, we have one nineteen thousand and five hundred, which we have twenty-eight percent decrease than last year. Then we go to professional services, which includes line item fifty-four oh nine through fifty twenty. We have the GPS, we have the legal professional services, professional services and the computer bank charges. And we have professional services annual audit, because the city has audit. And I wanna, I wanna bring that one to mayor's attention also and the council, that the cost for the audit is only twenty-seven thousand dollars. So next year, hopefully, we don't need that forty thousand dollars, so reduce that one to twenty-seven thousand. And the line item also, I need to point out, this one professional, fifty-four oh two, professional services, which is the computer, the contract that we have with Nauticon. We just moved from Google to Outlook, which is gonna save us almost ten thousand dollars a year. So last year was sixty thousand, this year we're gonna have hopefully less than fifty thousand, but I'll look at fifty thousand for now, with seventeen percent decrease. And then the total for that section is gonna be two hundred ninety thousand dollars, fifteen percent decrease than FY twenty-two. The next section is other services and charges. We have the team building appreciation, which for the city hall, we have. City hall, we have this one, the line item, I believe, mine, this section, I'm sorry.
One thousand?
Yes, one thousand, I'm sorry, one thousand. I just wanna make sure that, uh, same number as last year, the travel expenses is two hundred fifty. Cable charges, we don't have any cable in the city hall, so I just put that one as zero. The last year was five thousand, um, we don't have that much. I don't know anything about the cable at the city hall. And then we have the miscellaneous expenses, which we keep it as last year, zero increase. So the total for that section is two thousand two hundred fifty dollars, sixty-nine percent decrease. Then we go to community activities and line fifty-five, thirty to fifty-five, fifty-five, starting with the conference. And the convention, it was five thousand, I'd like to have it as a thousand, because from the city hall, I'm the only one that go on. So there is a big decrease.
MML.
MML, one thousand.
There's two.
Yeah, okay.
Just remember that, there's at least two of them.
All right. Appreciate that, Mayor, for that, I forgot about that.
My, okay, all right.
Okay, we have it, so, all right.
Somewhere else, yes.
All right, association dues, that was seven thousand, we don't lose, they just brought it down to five hundred dollars, which is ninety-three percent decrease. Line item fifty-five thirty-two, subscription and publications, which we keep at the same number. This is the number, the line item that we, mayor just, uh, emphasized about. Fifty-five fifty-five, the new line item for the city hall or under the community activities, which is the public arts. And they have requested nineteen thousand dollars, so I do appreciate mayor and council, let me know. And the total for the community activities for city hall is gonna be twenty to five hundred. So we have with the fifty percent increase and the increase is due to the new line item, fifty-five fifty-five. We go to infrastructure and facility maintenance, starting line item fifty-six oh eight to fifty-six hundred. We have one percent increase and the total is gonna be sixty-eight nine hundred, which includes the property tax, the phone, alarm service, electricity, heat and building repair and maintenance. And if you look, we, we stay the same number as last year. And the total operating expenses for the city hall is gonna drop two percent. And the total is gonna be one million and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-five point six. Then we have the grant expenses, which the ARPA money, and we bring the ARPA money over here, because I, as a city manager with the clerk and consultant, we're working on that. So we put, as Ron explained, two point seven for next year and see how much we're gonna spend next year. So the, the total expense with the grant for the city hall, we're looking at zero percent increase in three million, seven hundred fifty-seven, six twenty-eight point twenty-six. And that's for the city hall.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali, so you're doing it beautifully. All right, so, uh, council members, raise your hand if you have something to, uh, say. We got, we've got Jimmy, Luke, Jared.
So just in the regular pay, I mean, I see, I guess the question is, are you budgeting, uh, increase in terms of the, uh, wage salary? And I also see that you, uh, have a decrease in a position, so.
Yes.
The new number, uh.
I'm sorry.
Are we subtracting the person and adding, uh, a kind of a budgeted, uh.
I will let you know.
So how much is that and how much are we reducing? How much do we, how much are we doing by reducing person?
Just remember not to make a conversational question.
I, I just, I'd love to finish my comment, please.
I, I'm, I'm asking because you had two or three people answering, that's why, and.
So the question is, how much are we reducing the money by removing a person, how much are we budgeting? Pay rate, thank you.
We have three percent increase as a colo thing across the board for the entire city employees. And if you look at the city hall position last year, we had six employees, including city manager. And for this year, for FY twenty-three, one of the IT employees gone, so the number has dropped to five from six. And, uh, basically, we're trying to just increase by three percent. Ron, do you have anything else that you wanna add to that?
Yeah, it was the grant coordinator, right? That we moved from city hall to, um, administrative services.
So just to send some clarification, uh, city hall is one line, and then you have administrative.
Yes.
On a different page, and that's the reason why you said like they were in two different lines. So this is just city hall and then administrative services will be in a, in a, it's, uh, three pages later. Right there on the back of it. That's the reason why, so I wanna make sure we like differentiate between one and the other.
I guess my question again was, how much money do we save by limiting that position? And then.
That, well, we didn't save any.
Well, that, that's. You're talking about something else. Oh, I think, uh, this is a systems analyst, and I don't see the increase in.
Oh, oh. Can I answer that? The system analysis was giving seventy-three plus benefits, seventy-three thousand dollars, the last salary that we had for him. So we don't have him since March has been gone, but by looking at those wages, I believe there was something overall in the wages number, Ron, you remember, you're right, of the overall wages, that we were trying to make sure that everything is okay. So we're not adding anybody to that position. So if you look at it, IT person is gone, and that could be the the seven percent decrease that we have. But we are giving the rest three percent cola adjustment.
Yeah, the other thing to keep in mind is that, um, Mr. Kamali was able to negotiate the Nauticon contract from sixty to fifty, so that also like upset some of it. But that is still tentative based on how many work Nauticon does. If we have a lot of work through the year, that number could potentially influence. So that was one of the stuff that I've said and wanted and help on the other. Okay, so, uh, Jared, oh, sorry, Luke and Jared.
Yeah, um, the, the public arts program, I, I really appreciate that being its own line item. Um, I, I just offer to the mayor and council whether it would make sense to move that line item to administrative services where all the other committees are.
Sure.
Um, and we could title it Arts Commission, so we know that it's for the Arts Commission instead of Public Arts Program, it can be Arts Commission.
Appreciate it.
Move that line item to, um, administrative services.
We'll do, thank you.
Sounds, uh, it should be home, so that would be there to follow, yeah. Anything else, Luke?
Um, the professional services, um, uh, where was it?
Fifty-four hundred.
Fifty-four hundred professional contract services for, maybe I missed it, what is that eleven thousand dollars slated for?
Well, that was the strategic planning.
Yeah.
That item was thirty thousand, so we took nineteen thousand allocated to the arts, and I left that eleven thousand over here. Uh, but I was gonna ask mayor and council if you looked at line item fifty-four twelve, which is the temporary labor. So the city used to have a temporary temp over here for like, you know, anytime there was, uh, admin missing, we're not practicing this anymore. So what I'm asking, this line item to be combined fifty-four twelve, to come to fifty-four hundred as a professional contract, because we have a consultant, the Greenwill.
Yeah.
And make it twelve thousand overall or twelve to fifteen thousand dollars for any other professional contract that we may have in the future. So we don't need that line item fifty-four twelve, temporary labor.
Okay.
I don't think we need it.
I would, I think that next year would be a really good time to do the strategic vision making.
Yes.
Um, and I, if I remember the cost, I think it was nineteen thousand five hundred, so maybe, uh, if we could, maybe that makes sense, eleven plus twelve is twenty-three grand, so maybe that makes sense to combine it and have it slated for that, I wonder if the.
But remember, we have twelve thousand slated for the consultant. So if you want to put another.
Consultant for.
Consultant that is giving us services to go after the grants, the Green will.
Okay, so twelve is for.
Consultant.
So we'd have to ha- add another.
Nineteen thousand, so we're talking about thirty-two thousand dollars.
Right, so, um, twelve thousand's for Greenwell, we have eleven thousand set aside for strategic vision making, so we would need
Another ten more.
Another ten more.
Ten more in case.
In case.
Yes.
Probably another ten K, and that's something that I would.
Good. Appreciate.
Like to consider.
You would like, you'll have to find it somewhere?
Yeah.
Put it on your list.
Okay.
Uh, Jared, go ahead.
So definitely.
I don't have any, uh, any questions.
Um, so I have a question, Mr. Kamali, because I know you know this, you guys know this better than I do. Um, the ARPA consultant, where does that land in, on it?
The ARPA, Mr. Thomas Hammer.
Okay.
That's the ARPA.
I know, but in the.
It's charged to the ARPA.
Yeah.
Because I wanna make sure, that's remember how like, that the page that I was asking to be on, and I'll be asking in the next one, that way we could line up some of the ongoing expenses we're, we're having, because also the single audit, we're actually gonna have to like, um, account for that as well. So what I don't want is for us to start thinking that we have all this extra money, but we have other responsibilities attached to it, whether it's like, you know, we eventually to the program manager or the consultant, we already know how much per year one costs, we know per year how much the other one costs. So that way we could have a section that's like administrative fees that are related to, um, ARPA. Uh, so that way we know administrative and everything else, because, um, I wanna make sure that everything that's ministered, kinda, and anything that can ask for one favor, on the top of the page, can we put like what it is?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so if the city hall is gonna put it in right here, it definitely will help.
Thank you.
To make it, um, a square up here.
Thank you.
To make it a little bit easier to follow, um.
City hall, I don't.
Yes, like in other heading pages and stuff, there you go, so it's bolder, we'll see it, cause, um, so facilitated for, for all of us. All right, and, uh, so you answered the public worth, let me see, um, there is, um, one, and I hate to do this to you, Luke, uh, for the increase for association dues. We're gonna have to, uh, discuss, um, adding, uh, what's the call, potentially adding NHC, the National League of Cities, if, um, uh, yeah, so that's gonna be one of them, and then, uh, switching, uh, one and adding, uh, Naleo into it. So that's a discussion we should be having in the next meeting, so that will affect, like, that will create an increase in that line item.
Okay.
Fifty-five thirty-one, fifty-five thirty-one, city hall.
Uh, for mayor and council.
Oh.
So as I said, I have to go back, I apologize, when I saw their fees, I re- I thought it were gonna be on, sometimes they combine them, but since they're separately, I wanna make sure I honor.
Should be the same line item in mayor and council, League of Cities.
Yeah, how much again?
Um, the National League of Cities, I'll send you the numbers, so what, because we need to pass everyone, and also I've done a little yearly fee. So that'll be the two that I'll be, um, requesting to move on, to move into it. And the mayor's association fee is gonna go up a little bit more from fifty to a hundred, so that's, um, at least that's what it looks like, we're gonna have a, um, that's what it looks like right now, if it doesn't change it, so that's gonna go up a little bit more, along with whatever that expenses cost, because there's other fees that I need to, other location, other, other stuff that I need to do as mayor, that, including the mayor's association fee, uh, that I'm responsible to be there to get all this stuff, so.
As long as mayor, give it to us and we'll take it up.
I know, so I wanted to make sure at least pointed out, because some of it might take some, um, some legislation and talk about it, but I wanna flag it, so that way I'm coming minute twenty-two, I'm trying to avoid committing many questions for anything. All right, council, anything else to, um, to ask, so this will be the second round, uh, Jimmy?
Maybe it's just a roots of point, but I think it's to take the Arts Commission expenses and put it in the
Admin.
Community activities.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the.
And the other thing was, uh, in the future, you know, putting the, the numbers in numerical order.
Sure.
So, yeah, because it's like hard sometimes to find them, you know, in other words, you have fifty-four.
The only reason that we cannot sometimes do that, because each section title, like community activities, so we have to go back and revise all the numbers. And we have to refer it to year before, because you wanna see how much we spend in FY twenty-two.
No, what I mean is fifty-four oh one, should fifty-four oh nine should be down here.
So you see under professional services, Mr. Kamali, where it's like fifty-four hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
That should be in top of fifty-four nine, I know sometimes it sound like the penny water, but yeah, this is, this is.
No, 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 no.
Next year, maybe next year.
Yeah.
We'll do it this year.
They're gonna do another, they're gonna do another round of this.
That's why we are here to get all the direction and advice from.
Restore the, the number six.
The section. Thank you.
All right, so Luke took a note of that as well. Um, so since the second round got opened up, um, Jimmy, um, she already spoke, uh, Luke or Jared, do you have anything else to add to the section? All right, seeing that there is nothing else to add, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, Mr. Kamali, anything else to add this before I open it up to the public?
No, I appreciate that, just, uh, everything looks good and I appreciate it.
Perfect, thank you, so, um, I will, um, if we have anybody in the public on Facebook or on Zoom, um, that would like to have this, ask a question, please let us know. Anybody, guys, ladies, gentlemen, everyone, okay? Here, there is nobody, uh, council, you guys ready to move to the next section? Which is administrative service and that's two pages following, um, city hall, correct? Melissa's looking at me like. I got it, Melissa. However, keep your eye on it, just in case. All right, perfect, all right, so, um, and thank you for our public, uh, what's it called, call director, and I know chief is also in the building, they're gonna be, give us a little bit of time, we'll be getting to you guys very soon, okay? All right.
Almo is gonna be next.
I know, after administrative service.
Yes.
Almost there, Almo, she was here super early too. All right, so administrative services, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, we go to the first section, which is the wages and the leave pay. So, uh, we have line item five thousand, five thousand one, and we have a decrease overall eleven percent. So the total pages is gonna be three hundred four seven, one point sixty. And I have reduced the overtime from three thousand, three sixty-seven to one thousand, that's all we need. We tried to get everything. We try to get everything between the regular hours, so hopefully. And then we go to the employee benefits and the services, starting line item fifty-one hundred to fifty-one oh seven. We have all the medical expenses and the social security contribution and employment insurance and retirement contribution, which is, which brings us to a total of one fifty-one, three hundred ninety-nine point eight three. This is a nine percent increase uh, to FY twenty-two. The reason is the cost of the medical goes up every year. And also the workmen's come because of the incidents that we have, it goes up too. All right, so the next one, we have materials and supplies. Materials and supplies, since they all located at the City Hall, we use one um, line item in the City Hall. So that's why you see zero, all of this for the admin services. So it's hundred percent increase. Then we go to the repair and maintenance. Now here line item fifty-five sixty, equipment purchases. So here we increased from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars. And I will ask our director of admin and clerk to weigh in. This was the equipment that we wanted, Jared?
Jared, the camera.
M R T V.
M R T V.
Not Jared, M R T V.
M R T V, sorry.
Jared, Jared, no. M R T V.
That last name.
Own personal equipment, and so we wanna buy our own CD.
Yeah, oh, please.
And that's like cameras and everything else, yes.
All right, so the next line item, we have Professional Services. As you see that, we have another increase, which is fourteen percent. And the only thing that I would like to have it is line item fifty-four eleven, Employee Training, which our clerk is gonna go to so many trainings, which in order to be certified.
Yeah.
So I'm asking for five thousand dollars for that training and the rest of it. And then the last item, fifty-four twenty-one, Webmaster Services. This is the city's website, which is, we stay on the same, same number, which is, you know, ten thousand dollars. So the overall for that section is gonna be fifteen thousand dollars with fourteen percent decrease. The next item, we have Other Services and Charges. Here we have line item fifty-five oh three, going down to fifty-five ninety-nine. So we're getting the team building appreciation from seven thousand to four thousand because four thousand is enough for us. Then we have the travel expenses. We have the message, which is the message production stays the same line item with same amount, which is same number for last year at thirty thousand dollars. And then we have I-NET Services. We stay s- same number with zero increase. And if you see, there is a zero on the actual cost. I would just wanna bring to your attention, we have not received the payment yet. Usually they send it at the end of the fiscal year. So we should have something by June thirtieth for FY twenty-two. And then we look at the future, which is same number for next year. So the total for Other Services and Charges is definitely seven, seven fifty with seven percent decrease overall. Then the big section, we have the Community Activities, starting with line item fifty-five fourteen to fifty-five fifty-two. All the Community Activities starting here. And we try to stay with the same numbers. In the few line items, we have some slight increase. So from sixty-four eight fifty, we went to seventy thousand, which is eight percent increase. And uh, I believe that will help us to serve the community with all these community activities. And the last one, we have Infrastructure and the Maintenance because the team are located in the City Hall. So we don't need anything to add to those lines, so it's zero, but hundred, hundred percent decrease. So the total expenses for Admin Services, we have six oh five, seven twenty-one point forty-three, which is a three percent decrease to FY twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali. And a couple of this ones make perfect sense for them to remove. I think as we continue going through the budget, we should be able to live stream some of the stuff where it belongs, cuz I have no idea why pest control will be on the administrative services instead of City Hall.
Yeah.
Um, and same thing for other things. All right, so um, council, uh, make sure that we guys are having, asking the questions or you, ask all your questions and then they'll answer, avoid conversational back and forth because then it becomes like a conversation and between two people and not like a collective like uh, hearing or slash meeting, okay? All right, Jimmy, you have your hands up, go ahead, Jared?
So uh, I'm flipping back and forth between the number of positions in the department.
Yes.
And the salary and the reduction in salary is thirty-six thousand, but the number of positions in Administrative Services is the same. So how, how, how you?
No, no.
Is that your only question, Jimmy? Or have other questions besides that? Jimmy, I'm asking you.
I, I don't know, it depends how he responds.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so if you look at the number of the employees that we have, it's gonna be the same, but the reason for that, the Social Services last year was a part-time. But we moved it to the Police Department. And this year, I am asking mayor and council for the grant writer position to be full-time because I've been trying for past eight months to hire somebody as a part-time. They're not interested and we're losing a lot of grants. And I wanna make sure that the mayor and council help me to have that position. So the numbers are the same, even though we have given the department three percent COLO increase. That's my point. I said, there is something that, Ron, you want to question?
Let me, let me.
Sure.
Just. Explain my question really well. This is me, uh, just as.
Go ahead.
Uh, the number of positions remains the same, but yet the wage increase is lower, salary is lower. So I'm just trying.
That's what I'm trying to answer because you comparing to the last year. Last year, remember, if you look at FY twenty-two, it was three hundred thirty-six, sixty-seven, six hundred seventy-three, but this year we have only three hundred thousand, eleven percent decrease. I don't know how those number.
I think you also cut out certain positions that were value on more money, like your IP was very high up there. You also, but hold on, but you also remember, um, your position, Mr. Kamali, um, moved from a minute, from Public Works to City Manager. That was also a, a change in uh, in, in how to call it, even, even when it comes across, the salaries look like uh, um, so that's something to account for um, as well. So the, the hiring salary, um, you know, you were in that position for six years. So it's definitely uh, different than a, a person that just joined our team like right away. That's part of also the decrease that is included on it.
No, but uh, mayor, with all due respect, we're talking about the Admin Services?
Only?
Yes, he's talking about Admin Services, right? The decrease in the Admin Services, that was the question between me and Ron. Because if you look at the number, the number is not gonna change. In FY twenty-two, we have five people, even though I'm asking you to give me a full-time grant writer, but the Social Services has moved to Police Department. So she was a part-time. Now, having all of these changes, stay with the same number, Jimmy is right. Even though I gave three percent increase to everybody, still eleven percent below than last year.
But I guess what Jimmy's question is, is like, even if you have the same people, right? And you're doing a three percent COLO, why is there a decrease, not an, an increase?
Right.
Correct, Jimmy? That's, that's where, that's what I'm thinking he keeps asking even in the other portion. Go ahead.
The, the, the budget for fiscal twenty-three.
Yeah.
For, for all of the wages, we, we did the actual roster.
Yeah.
All right, the actual wages as our starting point. Um, we don't have the detail of how the fiscal twenty-two number was developed. So we can make some guesses.
Yeah.
But we don't know for sure. It's entirely possible that fiscal twenty-two number is budgeted too high.
That's right, that makes sense.
That's what I was trying to say, that FY twenty-two number, it could not be correct because it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. So, and just to be clear, like even if it was over budget, that money is not spent, still stays our money.
No.
So that's just the difference on it. Melissa, you have something to add as, as um?
Just to note, also we moved the HR from Admin to City Hall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa. Jimmy, do you have a follow-up question?
That was the question, so you think it may have been under budgeted for last year?
Yes.
Over budgeted.
Entirely reasonable, yeah.
As mayor mentioned, we have not spent that money, so we haven't lost anything, but.
Yeah.
We've always spent ninety-seven thousand.
Exactly, yes.
All right. Perfect. Jared?
Um, I don't think, yeah, I don't have any, just a quick comment that I appreciate you investing in equipment our staff needs and the training. Just I, I really, that's a, those are very important things. So thank you for paying attention to that. That's it.
Thank you, Luke. All right, uh, so I have a question for Melissa. So you could clarify this one for me. For the Veterans Celebration, that amount is for the two celebrations or just one?
The Veteran Celebration.
Oh.
Well, it's supposed to be the, for all the total of if we have in two events.
Okay, let's check it. So on the Veterans Celebration, added S to it cuz celebrations, we are doing uh, two um.
Okay.
Uh, this upcoming year, we figure like, you know, uh, one of them is in the winter. It's very cold. And then we're also gonna do like another one where the weather size, with the idea to get our veterans together and be able to conversate and, and come out as well. So that way, um, we're bringing up, um, we're bringing them up to the front. Okay, and, yes, Mr. Kamali?
I just wanna.
Go ahead.
Be very clear and, and transparent.
Yes.
For Admin Services, I have Melissa, I have the clerk, Melissa Sam, to be promoted to the Director of Admin Services slash City Clerk.
Okay.
She's in charge of everybody that, the grant writer, communication person, media production, admin.
Yeah.
Assistant and the social worker is not, is with the Chief of Police. So I just wanna let you know that.
Thank you so much.
Is the changes. And if you look at my chart, organizational chart, you see those changes. And we brought the mayor and council and the resident from the center of the chart cuz last year was not. So I just wanna make sure that.
So I have another question regarding the message production.
Yes.
We have cut down on the message.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if we could just create a line item to be able to fulfill the other things that the messenger doesn't, including like um, promotion when it comes to like their social media platforms and other items. Because the reason why, so currently the messenger is um, with mail, it's very hard to do it, but we like cut half of them, so it's like every other month about, so they're combined issues. Um, that will allow the other thing is like, we're working on the next mission, actually being like, set up on locations, like either the apartment buildings or the senior places and the, and some of the businesses.
Common.
So that way people could go pick them up. I mean, we could do, and then get electronically mailed to them.
Okay.
And if there's a small list of people that needed like mail for a reason, we could, we could discuss that. But the reality right now is like, the message is not getting to everybody. We're spending a lot of money and a lot of capital, um, human hours to create this. Um, that makes it very expensive, but I do feel that we should do a separate line item to account for the other social media platforms that we have and also even see what it looks like to have, like, you know, um, to increase that, that um, that way so we could balance both of them out. And in doing so, we save some trees because the reality is like, we sometimes do paper and media, so that will have at least a line item for, for the things that are needed. Cuz um, I mean, we're trying to like penny pinch everywhere to find a, a tablecloth for the presentation for like the media team uh, to come out and do something, right? Um, and so, but that gives you an example of that would give room for us to be able to do the other things that are needed. Makes sense? So if we could do that, I'll take some money out of like the, the messenger to put into that field. We are gonna be dealing with the reality of be able to fulfill some of the things that uh, that position uh, the community um, Communications Coordinator uh, also needs to be able to do their job.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for uh, that, uh, council, I will open it up to the second round if there's any other second round to add. Okay, and um, I know we made reference to it and I know we didn't start it that way, but um.
Oh, can you repeat the?
Basically, the messenger has thirty thousand.
The line item is.
We wanna make sure, yeah, so I wanna make sure to create a separate line item to be able to fulfill some of the stuff that community uh, coordinator needs to do when it comes to social media and everything else.
We will get some help.
Do we know what the money would be for that, would be extra or would be out of?
Out of, some of it out of the messenger.
Yeah.
You know, cuz we could have the issues, but that's a, that's a conversation they could have and bring us numbers depending on what is it that they need and I will work with them to figure out what the plan looks like for this year. Because we have the position, but it's like basically like pulling uh, from every single angle to try to get, even like, you know, an advertisement for social media for Facebook, right, for our elections or whatever it is. And we've been doing a lot of that and also making sure that we do the print and the, the, the electronic version of it.
Thank you, mayor.
All right, all right. So uh, the, the, let's go back a couple pages, this page is number two or three of the budget, the organizational chart. Um, we have President, Marina Residence at the top of the chart, that's page number three of the budget. So followed by Mayor and Council, followed by City Manager, and then you have all of your directors, Economic, Chief of Police, Co-Compliance, Administrative Services slash Clerk, Finance, Public Works and HR, those are your directors.
Yes.
And followed by the various positions under uh, the Chief of Police, the Administrative Lieutenant, the Patrol Lieutenant and their Record Manager, Minister of Assistant, Parking Enforcement, Social Service Coordinator, under Code, Admin Service Assistant Tech One and Co-Compliance to Officers. Under Administrative Services, you have the Administrative Assistant, the Grand Writer, Communications Events Coordinator, Media Production Coordinator, you know, Administrative Assistant is the person that's also in our front desk, correct, Mr. Kamali and Melissa?
Yes.
Under Director Finance, you have the Senior Staff Accounting and the Staff Accounting. Uh, Public Works, you have the Program Manager, uh, Maintenance Manager, two CDL Drivers and the Laborers. And once we get to that issue, we'll have the temporary works, uh, Laborers are also part of that. HR is on its own and Econ is on its own. Under PD, under Lieutenant Patrol, you got the Sergeants, the Corporals, the Detectives and the Officers, okay? Uh, so total is one City Manager, in City Hall, three Directors, six Staff and Economic Development, one Director and Police Department, one Chief, twenty-two Officers and Staff, Department of Code, one Director and three Staff, Department of Public Works, one Director, nine Staff. Totally in one City Manager, one Chief of Police, six Director Positions and forty Staff Positions. That's forty, forty-six percent, forty-eight. Uh, totally enough to forty-eight Staff Members for the city. All right, so that will, we reference back to exactly what we're talking about. And I apologize for not adding that up at the beginning. Okay, so uh, council, we are gonna be moving on two pages over to Code Compliance. And we have our Director of Code Compliance here, Alma Ferfino, who'll be joining us at the table.
Thank you.
Perfect, welcome. Good afternoon, Alma. Um, okay, so Mr. Kamali and Alma, the floor is yours.
All right.
Are you ready? Code Compliance, thank you. All right, the wages. Wages for Code Compliance, you see twenty-eight percent increase, two hundred forty-six, eight-nine-seven point six-six. Because uh, I am uh, proud to announce that we have a new Director for Code Compliance, that's Alma Ferfino. So last year, uh, the department was under Chief Austin supervision and I appreciate for all he did.
Yes.
So we tried to bring the code back to the original department that we used to have. So right now, I'm um, the Director of the Code, one tech permit and two inspectors. This department, if you look at the organizational chart, the only difference, you see the Director Position has been established.
Restored. It existed at one point, yes.
Yes. All right, so the total paid uh, wages and the pay for Code Compliance with twenty-five percent increase, we're gonna have two hundred forty-seven, eight-nine-seven point sixty-six. And uh, one more thing, I do appreciate the Director of the Code Compliance because we tried to get everything between nine to five. So we're bringing the overtime down to one thousand dollars unless we need. So we're bringing the overtime down to one thousand dollars unless we need it. So that's a, that's a decrease on that line item, five thousand one. So moving forward, we go to the employee benefits and the services. Unfortunately, this section in all department increases because of the medical expenses and unemployment insurance and workers' compensation. So we have twenty-four percent increase. The total is gonna be ninety-nine zero eight five point nine eight for line item fifty-one hundred to fifty-one oh seven. Then we go to material and supplies. So we have um, we have the line item fifty-two hundred to fifty-two-ten. A total of thirteen thousand dollars, same number, we tried to maintain, zero percent. And uh, zero percent increase. Then we go to the repair and maintenance, the next section, which starts fifty-three hundred line item to fifty-five sixty. And we try to stay the same. The only thing, because of the two vehicles that we have for the code, so I rather, you know, they're brand new and just brought down the expenses, five hundred dollars. Hopefully, we can maintain it. So that's only four thousand dollars instead of three five hundred for comparing to last year, an eleven percent decrease. Then we go to the professional services, line item fifty-four hundred to fifty-four eighteen, which is the professional service contract. This one, we have increased it from five thousand to seven thousand dollars and I believe that our director, she mentioned that we have a comp K.
Comp K is different than what we use.
Yeah, so there is an increase for that line item. Then we go to the employee training, employee training. We increase it for three thousand, which I would like for the director to go to the ICC, uh, DHCD training.
Yeah.
So she will definitely, and she will also have the inspectors to get some training too. Then we go line item uh fifty-four four fourteen, printing. We put one thousand dollars for the, for the code compliance, because we wanna make sure that they are able to print some of the violation forms and the forms that they need to have. And vehicle insurance, if you look at it, is zero because their vehicle is under public works. So we already pay fifteen thousand dollars insurance for the public works fleet, including the code compliance too.
Okay.
Then we go to other service and charges. Here we have uh, a zero percent increase. And uh, the total is same as last year, which is the team building appreciation that, and the interest for and the principle for the two calls that we have, code compliance. Then we go to community activities, line fifty-five thirty, the conference and the convention that the director needs to go, ICC. And hopefully next year, we will have this Ferfino in MML two, because I'm sorry, this year we couldn't have her there, but it's, it'll be a nice idea to have her there and get some of information over there, if mayor and council agrees. And then the total for that line item is three thousand with fourteen percent decrease. Infrastructure and the maintenance, that's a line item, because we moved the code compliance to thirty-four oh nine. Rhode Island Avenue, so we need to maintain the building for them. And so we're putting three thousand dollars in case if anything, and if in the future we move to the Dr. Gupta's office, then we're gonna take that one out. We don't need that money. And the abatement on property expenses stays the same. And the total is seventy-five hundred, sixty-seven percent increase due to new office that they have. So the total expenses for our code compliance is gonna be three hundred ninety-nine to seventy point sixty-four with twenty-two percent increase, which we have a new director, we have a new office, so totally a new department. And I do appreciate if Alma wants to add something too.
Alma, anything to add?
Um, all I wanna say is, um, thank you so much for the opportunity of being the director for good compliance. Um, and just looking forward to having everything that is impacted as a team.
Thank, thank you Alma. So I'm gonna open up the floor to council. If you have any questions for, for the team? Jared?
Yeah, just uh, just from my background, because I'm new here. So, you know, when I came in, you were, the director position was empty. Um, yes. So the, just from my understanding, what does the administrative assistant permit tech do?
So the administrative permit tech um involves uh taking care of any clerical um around the, the office, which takes care of actually any permits, licensing, uh, making sure a calendar is organized, uh, polar folders or P cap. So it's uh, it's a multiple things of that um, of the nature that actually the admin takes care of.
And that frees you up to be able to do the policy work and management work and running.
That was Alma's whole position.
Yep, that's, that's what I thought.
Somebody qualified to say what you're supposed to be. Definitely it'll be her.
And also the admin regular job, answering the phones, emails, and you know, making sure that, you know, everything goes.
Well, Alma's running around doing everything else.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all I, all the questions I had.
Okay.
Yep.
Luke? Jimmy? Okay, uh, so I have, I have a question. Uh, so yeah, so thank you for addressing the fact that we're hoping to move that department to the other side. The only thing I will ask is for uh maintenance to be left here regardless, because we're gonna have to, you know, even if it's minimal maintenance that we will have to do in that location. Is there, the numbers will reduce and then figure out, so that would be like a whole new brand new space. Also put on it just in case of an emergency, like you know, for all the things that we also were discussing, it's like I wanna make sure the maintenance, the prospect for all of our different buildings and the pace is gonna be added to the budget. Because the problem that we've been having in the city is that we have a lot of buildings. And money needs to be attached to it, because whether it's a building that is not used or not, they still need to run the heat during the winter. They need to make sure that it's in condition during the summer. If not, they start, you know, going downhill very quickly. So I wanna say thank you um, for association dues. I need a ruler, guys. But uh, for uh, conference expenses, fifty-five thirty, that one is a zero. Um, does that one includes the the director's uh code conference, so that was placed somewhere else?
That's two thousand.
That's two thousand.
That's two thousand nine, okay, good. And for association dues, why is there a decrease? There's a decrease in the program or?
No, not exactly. So the um, association dues is um, part of the ZOa that we do a yearly. Um, and it's not that high when it comes to their association dues. So, yeah.
I took the recommendation from the.
Perfect. No, I'm, I'm asking because we're like, you know, that way we know what it looks like. So even if you guys answer, I don't, I don't, I don't mind whoever answers. Alright, the other thing is like, yeah, I thought it was very interesting when I read this. Thank you, Mr. Kamali, for making this mention to Alma as well. Uh, fifty-two oh nine, the traffic coming devices, I found it interesting that it was in code and not nowhere else, including public works. That's where I feel that it should be. So thank you for also addressing that, because when I read it, I was like, why would that be placed there, right? Um, and printing, you guys might have to do more printing, because you guys spend a lot of paper, so you guys might need to look into a little more money in there.
We use our big printer that we have.
Yeah.
In the city hall. If we need to use HW printing, then the director.
And they do it, because I know a lot of you doctors are like triple or stick on items. Tho- those things are um, quite a bit. Alright, um, I don't have another question, but thank you for putting this together. Then we're covered for uniforms for the extra people, right, and everything that needs to be there. Alright. Um, Alma, thank you so much. And council, any questions for Alma, um, or not? Anybody in the community, chat or Facebook? We're good, we're clear. Alright, Alma, thank you for joining us this Saturday. I thank you for all your great work and um we're happy that you're the new director of code. Thank you, Mr. Kamali, for making that happen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alma.
Enjoy your Saturday, Alma. Alright, uh, council, moving forward two page um, from the page we currently are on, um. We heard econ is Ron there. Okay, Ron is there. And then we'll follow by chief here right after uh, Ron, okay?
Yes.
Thank you for also being here early. Um, okay, so economic development, uh, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. So we start with the wages and pay. A line item five thousand and uh, we have six percent, so I have to inform mayor and council regarding this line item. That that was ninety-three thousand two hundred sixteen in FY twenty-two, and we only giving three percent across the board. And when I got here, Mr. Hopkins asked me and I consulted with mayor that he should have had another three percent in FY twenty-two. So that's why you see the six percent instead of the three percent increase. So right now, uh, the salary for that department is gonna be ninety-eight, eight oh seven point ninety after the six percent increase. Then we go to the employee benefits, same thing. Again, the employee benefits, the starting line item fifty-one hundred to fifty-one oh seven. Vical, life insurance, dental, medical, workers, unemployment, and retirement. We have a total of forty-nine thousand four twenty-seven point four one, which is a thirty-five percent increase comparing to FY twenty-two. Then we go to the professional services. Uh, we say zero increase, four thousand for line item fifty-four hundred and for fifty-four eleven, employee training, one thousand. So it's gonna be a total of five thousand for the professional services. Then we go to the next section, other services and charges, the starting line item fifty-five hundred to fifty-five ninety-eight. It's gonna be the rent expenses, as we know that our department is located on the different location, which we pay uh close to fifteen thousand dollars a year. Then we have uh line item fifty-five oh three, which is the team building appreciation, one twenty, fifty-five oh four, economic development, industry. Um, just to stay the same number as last year for the main street and facade improvement. And then we have economic development programs, two thousand dollars, maintaining the same number. So there is a zero increase, and if you see line item fifty-five ninety-eight, we're gonna hide this line number is, and it does not belong to this to this department, which is the contingency. So the total for that total for other services and charges, it comes down to forty-seven one twenty, zero percent increase. Then we go to the community activities, fifty-five thirty to fifty-five thirty-one. Two thousand dollars for the conferences that the director attends and association, one thousand. So we're maintaining the same number, which is gonna be three thousand dollars, zero increase. The total operating expenses for that department is gonna be two oh three, three fifty-five point thirty-one with ten percent increase. Then we have some, some grant expenses that is located under economic development, which is the fifty-five, fifty-eight fifty. And that's gonna be the Rhode Island Avenue. So we're gonna rename that in the next work session or next meeting, we're gonna have this one updated, which is three hundred thousand dollars. We have not spent anything. And the total expenses plus the grant is gonna be five oh three, three fifty-five point thirty-one, thirty-one percent increase.
See, Mr. Kamali, you're doing this as the pro.
Thank you.
Pretty smooth. Alright, uh, council, um, the floor is open. We do have our uh economic development director on screen as well. If you have any questions for Ron, okay? Go ahead, Luke?
Ron, thanks for being on, on the, on the Zoom. Um, for the, the Main Street, can you talk me through, I I probably am misremembering this. I thought it was the thirty thousand dollars was a one-time thing to join Main Street. Um, so I see it in there for FY twenty-two, and then I see it again for FY twenty-three. Can you explain why it's in there for both years and, and what that's for?
Gonna mute. Ron, you're gonna mute.
Unmute yourself, Ron.
Ron, you're on.
Okay.
Maybe text him.
Ron, if you're talking, we can.
I am, I, okay. I wasn't able to unmute myself.
I hear you. Been hearing a single thing.
Alright, now, now I can talk, because I'm able to unmute. So in order to be considered a Main Street, you have to have a minimum in your budget of fifty thousand dollars per year. But we got an exception on that for thirty thousand dollars per year to be a Main Street. That's one of the requirements. Also, that Main Street, uh, that fund also goes to programming dollars as well. So that enables me to put on events. Um, years past, I had a budget for programming. It was forty thousand dollars, but they moved that forty thousand dollars to the Main Street. So this way I can put on events as far as like, um, highlighting the community and revitalization uh, and renovation events that correspond with the Main Street activities. So that's why it's a yearly allocated amount of thirty thousand dollars per year.
Okay, I appreciate that, Ron. And then, um, I just wanna congratulate you again on getting the facade improvement money for the south side of Rhode Island Avenue. Is there, I know you, we, we had emailed, you and I emailed about this, that you were gonna target Thirty-Fourth Street for facade improvements. Is that, is that, is that just gonna be a grant that you apply for, or does any of that thirty thousand go into that? Or do you have any plans on that, or just kind of your thoughts on?
So that is a grant that I'll be applying for. It's part of the um, DHCD grant. We've already been in conversations with them. So that's, that's an issue that um, I'd like to bring up as well, because we only have for operating expenses, the Memorial Park Grant listed, where we have the facade improvement on Rhode Island Avenue Grant and the CD BG Grant as well. And maybe those should be added in the general fund on the revenue section as well. So if it's, if it's listed on the revenue section, then it could be offset in the economic development expense section as well.
Okay, so uh, Mr. Kamali, give me some clarification, because this is made us being spent this year. It's not qualified for this year's budget.
That was the reason when, when I talked to Mr. Hopkins.
Yeah.
He said by June thirtieth this year, we're gonna be spending those money. So that's why we're not showing those. Otherwise, if we think that we need to show it, uh, I don't mind.
Yeah, so Ron, at this point, if everything needs to be spent by June thirtieth, does not come start in the FY twenty-three budget. This is for um, whatever's moving forward for FY twenty-three. So if you guys either extend the grant, it will show on it. Or if we get another grant, it will show on it, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, but the, the expiration date for the Rhode Island Avenue facade improvement is not until uh, twenty-three. Hopefully, I'll get it done by this year, June thirtieth, but it doesn't have to be spent by June thirtieth.
We can talk about that.
Okay, so get the, get the fine lining on it. Hold on. So get the fine lining on when the deadline is, and then we'll figure out if it needs to be included or not. Okay?
Okay, alright.
Right, thank you. Um, Luke, you had all your questions done?
I think that's all my questions. Thanks.
Okay. Jimmy?
Uh, just to follow up on Luke's, maybe we should be titled that uh, Main Street Programs. So, uh, because otherwise it looks like which says, which says Main Street, it looks like we're actually giving them the money. Actually, those are like programs.
So how do you want?
Just word it. Another word, programs.
Main Street Program.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, alright.
So that's perfect. Jimmy, anything else? Alright, perfect. Uh, Jared?
Yeah, sorry, Ron, the Main Street, is it, that's a state thing?
Yeah, we have a Main Street affiliate designation, yes.
Is that like a DA, DHCD?
Uh, it's through the state. It's through the state of Maryland.
Okay, great. That's um, that's, well, go ahead.
It actually, it is a Main Street National. So each state has a, a designation for their Main Street locations. And we can only have an affiliate designation due to the fact that we have a full, we don't have a full-time Main Street coordinator.
Ah, okay. Gotcha. Alright, that's helpful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anything else, Jared? If not, Luke, go ahead.
Um, yeah, maybe just walk through. I think it'd be helpful for me and maybe, maybe Jared and Jimmy, because they're new. When we do thirty thousand dollars for Main Street programming, um, how does that get us more money for the state? How does that turn into money for us in other areas?
So actually, we just received that twenty-five thousand dollars. That was um operations and technical assistance grant, and only a Main Street organization could get that. So that's, that was, that's the first example. Yeah, we just got recently awarded that money. Yes.
So it opens up, um, the affiliate opens up the opportunity to various grants. Eventually, when we could make it to like, you know, Main Street or like Main Street, Main Street, opens up a bunch of other ones. So the idea is like it will step some of the costs that we need to pull forward. So if we get twenty-five out of the thirty and the staff will continue to apply, uh, so the facade improvement or whatever else is that we need to work on. Uh, so the facade improvement or whatever else is that we need to work on. So that will continue going through, um, the city, uh, part one, part two, part three and part four, correct?
Yes.
That's the idea, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Uh, the other thing, just to clarify, the conversation about the three percent wasn't just with me, it was with the rest of council. I, I alone cannot make, um, that decision. Uh, it is a council, uh, decision to make. And to, um, to, to back to the point, it's under regular pay. You're clarified for us. Does this mean like everybody's getting, you propose, you as the city manager propose three percent across the border for everybody, right?
Exactly.
So is that three percent plus a six percent is a three percent?
No.
And something else.
Percent plus that three percent that was not given.
So be nine percent.
No, 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 no.
No.
Six percent.
Total.
Includes the three percent call for this year. If you look at FY twenty two. It was ninety three two one six, but right now, Mr. Hopkins is making ninety. I'm sorry. I don't wanna.
It's, it's in the, it's in the book. It's really, it's a department of one, so it's not like, he has like sprayed the, the money for anybody else.
Three percent.
Yeah.
He has already have.
Okay.
Percent out of the six percent.
Mm-hmm.
Another three percent comes in, which is the call, so it makes it six percent increase for him.
Yeah.
This coming year that he has it and he is getting the three percent since August that I've been here.
Yes.
You remember that conversation?
Yes, you all should remember that conversation.
No, no, no.
No, I just wanna make sure.
All of you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, perfect. Any other question, members of council before, um, I move on? If you have anybody on chat, um, online as well? Nope, nobody, okay? Uh, council, we're ready to move forward to the next one. Amber, this is a read through, you're, you're, that's what you're doing. Okay. All right, Mr. Hopkins, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate, uh, your time and be able to explain a couple of things. We had a question for the great work you're doing. I got a chance to be part of the entrepreneurship classes. They're very outstanding and definitely building, um, our local businesses to a degree that they needed that extra help. So, uh. Please, uh, thank you also our various advisors and that committee as well. Okay?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, thank you.
Have a good Saturday.
Kamali.
So.
Mayor and council.
All right, perfect.
See you Monday.
So, two page, three page, three pages moving on. Now we have the police department in front of us. We do have our chief of police. Chief Austin, who sees here in the capacity of chief. He's very happy that, uh, we removed the acting director. To it, so he gets to do, uh, his full time plus job as he's been doing wonderfully over this time. Welcome, chief, to our, to our table. All right, Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you and good afternoon, chief. So, uh, first. Section for the police department is gonna be wages, wages and the leave pay. So police department starts line item. Five thousand to five thousand four. It's a regular pay overtime, court pay, shift differential. And officer fill training. And, uh, so looking at the numbers, we're gonna have four percent increase, which is gonna be one million six oh seven, one five five point one six. I wanna bring to mayor and council attention. Our chief is asking for another police officer. That's why we have. The number of the police department with moving the social services from twenty one to be twenty three for the physical FY twenty three. And, uh, overtime stays the same, court pay stays the same. Shift differential, we'll look at it and I believe that Mr. Ron Wilson calculated that number based on the. Current trends that we have, which is one seventy two, five fifteen. So far, we have paid as a shift differential. And then officer fill training stays the same, so four percent increase for the wages. Even though we, we have given everybody three percent. Across the board. But again, look at the number between last year and this year. So that over. Charging or whatever that number was is not, yeah, inflated somehow. Then we go to the employee benefits and the services. Um, so we have seventeen, seventeen percent increase, starting line item fifty one hundred to fifty one oh seven. FICO, life insurance, dental, medical, workers, compensation and employment, retirement contribution. Which brings us to a total of nine hundred eighty four, five seventeen point nineteen. And then we go to the next item, materials and supplies. Materials and supplies is the only section that we have some. Forty nine percent increase and I will ask our chief to explain more and give more information to mayor and council. Line item fifty two oh two to fifty two ten. Starting with line item fifty two oh two, computer and supplies from two thousand, we go to ten thousand. The police department is trying to upgrade some of the desktops that we have. And that's the only reason that we have this increase. Then we go to line item fifty two oh three, material supplies stays the same, fifty two oh four, police equipment. And supplies from five thousand to thirteen thousand. This, I would like for chief to explain a little bit more about this item, which appreciate that. Okay, and then we go to uniforms. It's gonna be again, our police department, we need to upgrade some of those uniforms, which is. Uh, we increase it to, from seven thousand to thirteen thousand five hundred. Then we have uniform cleaning expenses. Which is, uh. Only a slight increase, five thousand to fifty seven hundred. And then the vehicle or the fleet fuel and oil stays the same. So we have a total of eighty two thousand two hundred. Before I move to the next section. Chief, could you please explain line item fifty two three, uh, no, fifty two four please?
Yes, sir, I will. Um, part of these, uh, equipment increases are due to us purchasing, uh, less lethal weapons, which are the bowler rat. We're trying to find, uh, better ways to lead the S fleet situations. So, uh, we've, uh, gotten a vendor, had several presentations presented at chief's conferences. Some of our partner agencies have, uh, purchased them as well. So that's, um, that's included in that purchase. Uh, computer, equipment supplies, Mr. Kamali, we did away with the computer software expenses line item.
Yes.
Yeah. That's, and move that. We have several, uh, training software packages that we use in house. So that's now included under computer equipment and supplies.
Appreciate that. What about line item fifty two oh six, firearms supplies?
That is due to increases in ammunition, is also due to increasing in, our increases in training. Uh, we were doing annually, uh, we're gonna move it to twice a year. So those are, uh, that accounts for that.
Thank you, chief.
Also save you some money in that line item. Uh, we now have two firearm instructors in house. So in the past years, we've been paying, uh, other, uh, instructors out the state to train our team. Now we have our own instructors in house.
All right. Should I go to the next?
You go right, you go right through everything.
All right, repairs and maintenance, we have line item fifty three hundred through fifty three oh four. And, uh, vehicle repair, we go from twenty to thirty thousand. Some of the vehicles, you know, unfortunately, you know, we have. And foresee invoices or situation. Then we go to the equipment. Repairs and the maintenance, chief and I talked, we don't need that line item because it's in the vehicle with the maintenance. So. We put zero over there, we save fifteen hundred dollars. Equipment, equipment purchases stays the same, fifty two hundred. Radio maintenance stays the same, three hundred dollars. And then we go to the MRBA security cameras, based on the chief information, we, uh, we increase it from one thousand to twenty five hundred. So the total for this line item is gonna be thirty eight thousand, which is thirty six percent increase. Then we go to the professional services, line item fifty four oh four to fifty four twenty three. The dispatch services, computer software, employee training, recruitment and testing, police liability insurance. Vehicle insurance and parking citation recovery expenses. So starting with the dispatch, with the Hattsville, that contract that we have. So we're expecting slight increase, which is sixty nine thousand instead of sixty seven. Computer software, this is the line item that chief and I decided to. Put zero and use the computer equipment supplies, line item fifty two oh two. So we're saving. Uh, we're saving almost twenty thousand dollars over here. And then we go to the employee training, we stay on the twenty thousand dollars. Police liability in, uh, I'm sorry, fifty four ten, recruitment and testing. So we increased this line from four thousand to seventy eight hundred. We have some bilingual officers. We would like to, to have them, you know. Be involved in the community because forty percent of the community are Hispanic, so we need to have bilingual in team. So we created some incentives. Chief and I decided to move this one to seventy eight hundred if it's okay with mayor and council. Then vehicle insurance stays the same, twenty four thousand. And parking citation recovery, if you see zero, chief and I working on it. We are talking to the vendors and we have some unpaid tickets. So definitely we can have some information soon. And, um, this is, that's why it's zero right now. So the total for total professional services, we have one hundred forty thousand eight ten. Which is nine percent less than last year. Then we go to other services and charges, line item fifty five oh three to fifty five ninety nine. Which is the team building appreciation, interest on the PW truck. No, that's, that, that line item should be hide it. Yes, I'm sorry. All right, so the team stays, team building appreciation, same number, two thousand dollars. Interest on the capital lease police car, twenty four hundred. Which that one has dropped and Ron can tell us why. Then we have the principal also increased to forty thousand. And miscellaneous from eighteen hundred to two thousand, the total is gonna be forty six eight sixty. Zero percent increase for this line item. Community activities, so we have line item fifty five fourteen to line item fifty five fifty. Starting with public safety night expenses, which is three thousand last year. I believe this one was in the city hall or admin services. So we wanna have it in police department because there's the one doing it. And then we go to. To the national night out, increase that one only by five hundred dollars because. Uh, we need that five hundred dollars extra to be able to have the national night out. The rest stays the same. The total for community activities is gonna be ten thousand dollars with fifty four. Percent increase than last year. And the reason is because we brought the public safety night and the national night over here. So then we go to the infrastructure and facility maintenance. Is it stays the same, no increase, zero percent, total is twenty five seven hundred. Then we go to capital outlay or capital project. Uh, we're not planning to buy anything. I think chief is gonna use that fifty thousand in FY twenty two and purchase and lease.
Yes, sir.
Lease two cars and hopefully we'll be fine. And then, um, the total expenses, upgrading expenses for our police department with seven percent increase. Will be two million nine thirty five, two ninety five point thirty six. And then we have some grants for the police department. Which the grant expenses, we have line item, um, five thousand and. Fifty eight fifty cops grant, which is forty one sixty six point sixty seven. The reason we have the line item five thousand because we would make this one to.
To pay salaries.
Pay salaries. And there is a note on the bottom of that page. And then we have the police basement renovation, chief and I working on RFP, putting the RFP out. And get that basement moving. So we're gonna use that three hundred thousand hopefully this summer and it depends. And the total is three million two seventy six, nine sixty two point oh three.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. Uh, chief, anything else to add to this or? There were a couple of the ones that, that Mr. Kamali referred to you. Do you wanna go ahead and make a call?
Yeah, I will.
Yes, ma'am, I.
You haven't already?
I did, I guess, those, but.
All right, perfect.
But also, I think early on in the meeting this morning, there were some questions about speed camera. And all, just wanna clarify that. I think Jimmy wanted to make sure we had the actual locations posted on the, on our website and. They are posted. They've been posted since, uh, August, actually July twenty twenty. Uh, and the process was we had to give notice for thirty days before actually going live. So we issued warnings during that first month. And then we posted the actual location. We actually have a, a embusman here as well, Andre Bailey. Deals with any, uh, community complaints about our speed cameras and that way that works and also, uh, the speed. It's a twelve and more, so.
Damn, so DC has got it for eleven. I need to go back to them. I'll send you the ability, the here, a hundred bucks. Go on.
And then also with, uh, one of our biggest things you all know, when I became interim chief, uh, the, um. Conversation came about with the shot spider and I was against that. Uh, pretty much, uh, it's been my, uh, stance that. Our real way of preventing crime is by, by having that positive deterrents. Of police officers being visible, highly visible, constant patrol, um, constant contact, that community policing. Uh, a model, uh, with, with our citizens and our businesses. And that's why, you know, we're requesting another officer in patrol. You see, we have two detectives. They've done great. They also double in patrol as well. Uh, us in command, we double in patrol as well. We had the rash of carjackings and, um, uh, citizen armed robberies months ago.
Yes.
Uh, mayor and, uh, city manager know that, um, I had upcoming training and we, we had to cancel that training for me.
Yep.
Uh, because I could not go. So, um, you know, knowing that we had these, uh, individuals out there, they're all in custody. Uh, every, uh, armed robbery of any, uh, business that we've had in the past month. Each of those individuals are all in custody now.
Yep.
You may have seen them on the news recently. Uh, they're the ones that DC featured along with the FBI. Uh, because of the rash, you know, of, of incidents, they're being charged with conspiracy as well. So, uh, clearly there are individuals, they've been positively identified in each location. So we have them off the streets and, uh, it's a few more things we're wrapping up as well. So. So we have a great team and, uh, you know, one thing is, um. To keep our crime rates low, but also the fear of crime. You know, we want our citizens to not, want them to be always vigilant, but not to have a fear of crime. So, uh, we were so close to the nation's capital, which your crime and homicide rates are pretty high. Uh, we wanna make this a hard target for anyone who wants to commit offenses in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And I'm gonna open up the, now the floor to council and myself. Um. So if you have any questions, you have our chief of police, Mr. Kamali is well here to answer any questions that we have. Jimmy, go ahead.
All the comments and the questions is a look we can make. Uh, I mean, I really appreciate everything you do and everything the department does and just how responsive you are and, you know, you've been, you've been really great. But when you call and say, and the police have always been community policing. I, I do get some heartburn, honestly, when you have this, we're not defunding the police, but, you know. The, the, actually, the amount of the police public safety budgets going up by seven percent, they get the. Whole budget is only going up by four percent, which means that the percentage of. Resources that go to public safety is actually a greater percentage than it was in the past. And that kind of gives some difficulty and. Uh, I'm not sure, you're gonna have to really convince me that we need an extra person. I mean, the tax rates are very high here and, you know, I, I appreciate everything and just, it's, you know, there's a lot of. Different things gonna go on, you know, we wanna be safe and people wanna do, we also want, we also wanna make sure that they're all turning away to doing it. So. I'm gonna be, I mean, I'm honest, I'm trying to kind of hesitant about adding. Another position and I don't take personally, just in terms of what I'm saying. So maybe you can kind of talk more about that. Cuz it's gonna be a, a difficult thing for me to swallow.
Sure, uh, thanks, thanks, Jimmy. Uh, as I said, uh, the highly, high visibility of patrol. Uh, the need for officers to take home from vacations, sickness, training, um. When I looked at this model when I got here, uh, almost three years ago. Coming from a smaller municipality. And I was surprised with the density of our population, how low we were in manpower here. Because clearly, uh, taking those things in consis, in consideration, I've had to deny training because I needed coverage. Uh, um, I've run overtime. Uh, I've run overtime, uh, recruitment and retention, been pretty difficult for all of us law enforcement agencies across the nation. So we're gonna have to, uh, as you know, we, we've had a line item for FY twenty-two. Uh, it's been very difficult in looking, we're just not looking for people who are certified as police officers. We're looking for the best, you know, for our citizens and so I'm not gonna settle, but uh, for, for anyone coming in. But one, one thing I look at Jimmy is that what we're doing automated speed. As you know, my, our goal is in automated speed is to change the behavior of drivers. But the revenues, what we're bringing in and what we have to date now, we estimate for FY twenty-two to bring in uh, five hundred thousand today, as of a, a couple of days ago. We've now brought in six hundred and seventy-one thousand. So when we look at that seven percent increase and, and as we know, one of the uh, ways public, the speed camera revenues can be used as public safety, road repairs, uh, police department. Uh, I'm asking our city manager to look at for FY twenty-four, to put a entire portion of our police department and our expenses under automated speeds because we're gonna go way over to ten percent that we can keep. We can only keep ten percent of the city's gross receipts for automated speed and the cost of the program. So those uh, salaries will be now put as a cost of the program. So it won't tax our citizens and our taxpayers at all. It, it's money that we'll use to keep that uh, our uh, uh, revenues supplied for our uh, public safety, but won't tax our citizens or our taxpayers and uh, won't have to be returned or given to the state's general fund. There's uh, you know, I can show you several models that I created for the former chief, just so he could play what-if scenarios. Uh, but we're well over, if we're estimating, which we are for FY uh, twenty-three, we're estimating seven hundred and fifty thousand. With our bad debt we currently have outstanding and what, and us going now going twenty-four hours a day, we're gonna be closer to one point five million, which is double what we're estimating. So um, so I'm gonna be asking for a, a lot more, you know, resources for our community because we wanna keep our community safe. And this uh, addition of one officer, that's, uh, that's, that's a start. But uh, but clear, clearly that high visibility that we need, uh, the uh, officers that need to stand in with others or in training. Um, you know, because truly, I have a team that's been promoted last year. Some of them need to go to first line supervisor training, but I can't, I can't uh, I can't balance it right now with uh, our need to be on the streets. When incidents happen, uh, when we have a theft uh, from auto situation, as we had the airbag theft.
Fourteen cars.
We quickly, yes, sir. We quickly deployed additional officers. Uh, one thing you'll see we're setting up now, uh, our patrol lieutenant, Lieutenant Sims, has given me a program that we're gonna do because we hear our citizens. The speeding that's on uh, bunker hill and the uh, running of stop signs throughout our city, we're setting up proactive approaches now. Where I have certain times of day that they proposed to me that we will have enforcement. And we'll, at the end of that uh, campaign, we'll be uh, given to our team here, uh, the number of citations, warnings. Uh, we're also gonna give analytics to uh, the number of uh, those stops that are actual Mount Rainier residents. Because many of us being created, you know, is happening with our own citizens. So, uh.
I appreciate that, Chief, I just wanna echo Chief. Uh, the goal is to create a public safety. In order to do that, you need to have the manpower, the manpower that we need, we're trying to avoid those overtime. Overtime is, you know, just too much and we wanna make sure that our officer gets time to go to their training, to take your time off and we don't wanna put the burden on other officers, so we do appreciate that.
The other thing, when it comes to training, um, we need to have our officers trained. That's something, you know, when it comes, not just our officers, but our whole entire staff, that's something that allows us to be stronger as a city. Uh, the last thing I need is because we're skipping so many trainings that something happens because we don't have the latest information.
You have to stay in compliance.
I definitely would like to point something out as well, uh, to the residents and to everybody in the board. It's like you also have to remember that although we're going up, we have diversified what PD looks like. So um, social service coordinator that moved from city hall into police department, so that's part of the increase. Uh, we have two detectives that have been solving directly cases to mariners, so no longer the cases are gathered by officers and sent to the county and as, as much work as the county does, the reality is like if they have to have a, a car accident where somebody is, you know, murdered or killed, they're gonna have a lot more time to that than if, like for an airbag, right? So keep that in mind, we have diversified. The other thing that we increased was the community activities where they're highly attended. Uh, both the safety night and public night were ridiculously highly attended. So that's also another way for them to be able to go out and relate and making stop at businesses, having signing sheets. And my whole thing is like, we are gonna have to pay in overtime or we're gonna have to pay it upfront with having an officer on it. But the reality is like, is one of them has to give. And if they continue cutting off on one side of their training to try to make up because they cannot go to what they need to be, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble very quickly. So keep in mind, the PD, as it used to be, it wasn't always community uh, police. It was very differential and in the last years, we have done a big effort to diversify what the, what the police officers look like. And even our mystery staff is doubling up in patrol. But the reality is like, there's only so many of them we could have before we gone overtime. And do have, how many hour shifts do you guys work?
Twelve hours.
Twelve hours, so now you have somebody working twelve hours plus whatever extra time they need to put. At a certain point, we are gonna be losing officers because there's only so much time you could be up, fully aware of your situation before you get yourself into a situation where you're running in eighteen, nineteen hours of, of work. So be aware of that, we definitely don't wanna get there because the lack of sleep will create like, eventually creates problems of people not being fully alert what they're doing. And, you know, and that's the reality, if we wanna keep our officers for a long run, uh, we need to focus on that as well.
Thank you. I have a number of questions. Uh, the first one is the uh, cops grant which you're funding, that's a DOJ, that's a DOJ thing, right? Is that an ongoing thing to receive every year or are we gonna have to find a place for that?
Only for three years and I started last year.
Okay.
So I started FY twenty-two.
Right.
So it's uh, total of one hundred and twenty-five thousand over three years, three years.
Okay.
So it helps to supplement that additional.
But at some point three years from now, that's gonna fall back into our regular budget. Second thing was, um, so you made a comment about the speed, sorry, speed camera revenue is increasing and directionally, it probably looks like it'll remain high. So you're saying, you're, you were saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, that our, the use of that funds is restricted to publics, largely to public safety, um, so that, you know, in some ways that revenue is rolled off specifically for police or associated public safety costs, so I, I see, I'm correct there, okay.
Yep.
Um, so that, that does make sense. Um, the note you made about overtime, um, I guess if bringing on an extra officer helps coverage, like I, overtime looks higher than it has been the last couple of years. Can you, can you speak to that?
Line item fifty-five thousand.
Line item, sorry, five thousand one, yeah, sorry, sorry.
I, I had to look at where we are, uh, uh, we're looking at uh, former trends uh, and analytics there. You saw in FY twenty, we were at a hundred and six thousand in overtime.
Yep.
Uh, our actuals for eight, twenty-one were eighty-four thousand. So we're just uh, we're just estimating uh, where we are because overtime still comes into play when officers are sick, when officers are on vacation.
We're, we're trending at a hundred and four.
So one more thing, there was an overtime grant that we were able to get, so that way those numbers might not directly reflect what is really happening when it comes to overtime in our budget. But you guys had a grant, correct, that's paying some of the overtime?
Yes, we do.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five, so, so that is not um, part of this conversation.
So I, I didn't wanna kinda, you know, while being very conscious of the commitment you and your staff are making to protecting us, um, you know, when I did a ride along with your officers, I was eye opening and seeing, you know, exactly how many things happened in a particular night uh, versus, you know, what I, what I perceived. So I just wanna comment that I really appreciated that and I really appreciate the work you do. I, I do, you know, have, you know, wanna kind of reflect some of the stuff that Jimmy is saying, like in, in the context of like a very budget constrained city with a, you know, largely residential property tax base that not a big commercial one, I'm, I, I, I think I'm, it, it is challenging to message, I think, you know, the additional staff piece and what that returns. And I, I think, you know, to the ability you're able to speak to that additionally. Cause it, as, as Jimmy is saying, I mean, it's every little, because we're so small, like every little piece here is like pulls a piece here. If we were like DC, you know, you can just, I mean, the budget, that was a lot of moving pieces. But here, every little piece makes, you know, is less staff investment in another second city and another area of the city where we can also be investing and I need to, that, that's.
Good, that makes sense. Uh, what I noticed, uh, when I got here almost three years ago, as I mentioned earlier, is that we've been so accustomed to a model that we, we think this model is working, it's a diminished staff in PD. Uh, we've been quite fortunate uh, to have the lower crime rates with COVID and all the things that have come about since then. Even in two thousand nineteen, uh, we had a homicide, drug related. That was a few months after I got here. A lot of what we've seen is that when we had that high visibility, uh, in the midst of our armed carjackings, our citizen armed robberies and we all got out there at night, we saturated the entire city. Uh, Queenstown, uh, Chilum, that, we stopped everything moving. Now, those things bought us some time, those crimes didn't happen those nights. They were constant crimes occurring, they happened to our neighbors, we pushed them over to Hydesville, pushed them uh, elsewhere in the county. But clearly I see something I don't wanna try to play catch-up with later on. So um, one, one additional officer, us being able to offset those costs with automated speed money, I think we're fine. We're not gonna take anything from our citizens or our taxpayers or our residents because we have such an inflow of automated speed money that if we don't use it, we gotta send it back. So it makes total sense.
Any other question you had in your?
Um, yeah, but let me hold my, we go.
That'll be second round, so you got your three minute, like, go ahead, Joe.
Um, appreciate you coming out here. Um, just some important context to add on some of the context Selena referred to earlier. Um, so we used to be, it was a patrol based model when we got in here. And then we reorganized to a community based model. And really what that means is it sounds like we did a big reorganization, but we're so small, it's only like a couple of people move around. Got rid of the deputy chief position and created a detective position, um, which has been immensely successful over the last couple of years. We've gotten awards, the detective has gotten awards for the crime that he's, I mean, some horrific crime going on in the city. Um, and so the additional, we have two detectives now on staff, right?
Right.
Um, and so, but this would, and, and that's great, it could work with these issues. Um, but if you look on the staffing level, all that's really being proposed is getting back to patrol level that was there in FY twenty-one. So if you look, police officer private slash first class, um, halfway through the police department's lift. And FY twenty-one, they had eight, and FY twenty-two, that went down to seven. And I think that was part of the COVID budgeting, that was part of making sure we had the detective on work. Um, that was, there was the, the sergeant position that was there, there were three sergeant positions. So it's, it's, it, while it is an increase in staff, um, one of them's just social service coordinator uh, moving from administrative services to, to police, so that's a, it's not, that's not washed. Um, so it's really the increase of one, but the increase of one is, it's not like it's getting an increase that we didn't have before. It's going back to the patrol staffing that we had in place in FY twenty-one, at least for the private first class, so. Um, but you can probably make an argument that, that overall patrol's gonna be up from where it was in FY twenty-one, which is a, which is a fine argument to make. Um, I, I think I am, uh, I, I understand the issues that Jimmy and I think Jared talked about with, with how we fund things, but I go back to something that Brian Nedler said when we had this debate last year, which is the amount of policing we need is the amount of policing we need. Uh, because there was a proposal that we only fund police at twenty percent of our budget or something like that. Um, and, and while I understand the, the, the feeling behind that, um, you know, one of the, where I still get complaints about from residents is, is on the police, uh, is on the safety front. Um, when, when crime happens, my inbox funnels with concerns. And I still remember when Selena and I went to Thirty-Fifth Street, when there was crime near there and we talked to lots of residents and, you know, they want to feel safe. And the extra patrol that we could saturate in the city at following that events really made people feel safe. Um, and so, uh, if, if this is kind of what the chief is calling for, I can trust the chief's position a lot. Um, um, if the budget can support it, I'm, I'm tending towards it. Um, and uh, so that's kind of where my head is at, but I understand the concerns Jimmy and Jared raised, so I'm, I'm willing to listen. Um, but that's where my head's at, thank you.
Thank you. So um, I, I spoke some of my piece. I think that one, having the different budget, that is fine when it comes to speed camera, that we were able to remove this conversation from taking away potentially from the taxes, because this is not what it could be used for, right? To upset taxes, not one of the things that the two camera could be used for, if it would, obviously we'll make, be making it rain, right? But I think that definitely will define, the other thing is that I always focus on the things that we have, comparisons into what we need to have. So yes, we have a social service coordinator that now we made a full time, so that way she's able to accompany, the police are able to send reference to, refers to her. But also means that our officers need to be trained to make sure that that's part now of like their everyday ask, which means that whoever we're hiring has that in mind. Now, if it's gonna be a fit for us for the specific reason of like, we are a welcoming city, we are a city that are very strongly pushing for community. And the reality is salaries around us are no joke. And this is the reason why a lot of officers are moving to various locations and it's hard to compete with certain things. One of the things that we have a plus on is that we do have great benefits, but also like, you know, we have um, our officers needs also met when it comes to some of the basic things that before, like, you know, the bike racks, when it came to be able to like the back training. But also when it came to um, making sure they have like the equipment, like if a resident tire has um, gone wrong, they have that equipment, if there's people locking on it. Prior to that, we had it to like call various police stations to figure out if the person that potentially had this equipment was on, on duty. If now was stood there and basically could not help a resident, now our officers are equipped with the basic community things that they could assist our officers. So to me, um, definitely like separating the budget to make sure we have here, what is it that we're doing or not will help. Uh, two, I'm, I'm all for having like, you know, saturate after the fact, but I think that officer, police presence, like, you know, is there with the extra person, we would totally leave some of those small things because they become a seventeen, three days in a row kind of thing, event uh, for X or Y, uh, Y reason. Um, uh, the detectives have been an added bonus to us, not only because they have been able to keep manipulated, you know, information that has some, like various cases like inside the city, that I have no doubt when I say like allow this, while continue that to increase, had we not had our own team in place, because that's the reality of it. Once you have your own team, you know, here's, yes, and then we follow through and they give us reports by us, I mean, Mr. Kamali and then through the whole community of what's going on. So at least where I'm at, because we have added, we moved the social security from one to the other, I could see the money. So if you guys would like, for the program community, um, both events also are getting more money because last year we were very underfunded for how many people came. It was a lot of people, uh, from the city in Marinian because our, our chief maintains good relationships with the other chiefs as well. We saw an impressive amount of like various police officers representation from the highest level in the state, county and all across, come and meet our residents. That's not just build overnight. So I will say to this, at least for me, that's kind of where I'm at. I feel like this is, because we moved those positions, it's justifiable. The other thing I was gonna ask you, for the cop grant for the new officers, is there any way we could try to apply for another cop grant? So that way ideally we could subsidize part of their, of this new position if moves forward, subsidize some of the cost and the other cost could be subsidized by the speed camera. So that way like we are mobilizing those funds, um, potentially from there.
Oh, no.
Can you ask me?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, uh, one thing that happens, we have to wait for that first round to, to, to uh, to deadline. Uh, and then we can apply again for the next three years for another hundred and twenty-five.
It has to be a brand new officer, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It can be a rehire as well, but it is, um, but it can't be for existing officers, yes.
Okay, so that would not be, because we still have two more years to go, okay? Okay. So that would not be because we still have two more years to go. Okay. Thank you for that.
Then just to add on, uh, something important that, uh, Anarondo County, uh, reached out to them. They're allowing two of our officers to come there in May for, uh, the 40 hour, uh, crisis intervention training, the CIT training. We have two more officers certified, uh, in de-escalation and servicing those with mental health uh, uh, issues. So that'll bring us up to four. Our goal is to get everyone, including me, through that training.
So, and thank you. And last one before I move on is like, we are moving our whole entire fleet from regular gas to electric. So that is requiring some extra costs in the police, uh, department as well. So be very aware that as we continue to change our fleet, um, at least administrative vehicles from PD to, um, to electric, that's going to create some increase in that field, in that portion as well. So we do have, uh, green goals. We do have community goals. Uh, so that is also a reason for some of the increase that we need to take into account. And I'll be honest, I'm not trying to convince you. I'm giving you the facts and then our, you know, city manager and chief could give like line item by line item, but be aware that some of the costs are associated with the increase that we're seeing in the department. And we'll see some of the train as we continue to switch the vehicles from one to the other to try to meet our, um, green edition goals. Yeah. So they're working towards that direction. So I'll go Jared this time because I thought you want.
I did. I just.
And then Jimmy and then Luke, if you have anything, go ahead. We'll go you first and then I'll get Jimmy.
Um, no, thank you for that clarity, Chief. I think that really helps for me to understand kind of where, you know, there's not just one big pot of funds when they come in and then go in the way they need to go out. Obviously there's limitations attached to. Um, so I, I think that's clear. I, I think my, you know, any, anytime, you know, Luke has always often said, you know, anytime we add most of our costs in the city's labor, anytime we add staff, you know, it kind of creates an ongoing obligation. I wish, my, my thoughts around this were just like, you know, speed camera revenue dips in the future, which it could. If the cops grant doesn't get back, then we are in a place where we have to make some hard, hard decisions. Um, I, I don't, you know, my, any angst, as it were, and it's not significant is, you know, just kind of thinking about the dynamics of where we allocate resources. But I think, you know, your, your background on that provides me a lot of, um, of, uh, background needed. Um, and I would echo what Luke said is like, I, I, my resident feedback on this, on, on policing, and it usually is, um, around public safety concerns. I have rarely gotten feedback on budget allocations. I generally get feedback on, you know, concerns about safety, asks for resources, asks for coverage, um, and so forth. Yeah, yeah. And, and a lot of the issues that we're trying to address, like traffic, safety, pedestrian, safety, uh, you know, those are, those are things your staff, they're helping us solve. You're, they're not just, you know, catching thieves and arresting people like they're, they're out there, you know, protecting the community and helping it and helping kind of some of the stuff we can do with like, you know, enforced traffic, um, traffic treatments. And there's some things that need to be done through enforcement and that can only be done by, um, folks out on the street and certainly having our own in-house department, um, ensures that that happens in our community. It happens in a community oriented fashion. Um, and then it would be per se if the county were. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Jimmy, the first first.
So I may be in the minority on this. I've been in this town council on and off for the last, you know, fifteen years. Uh, and this public city has always been a problem, you know, back in the nineties, it was like shootouts and drug wars. And it was old stuff. The police, it's always been an issue. Uh, we just can't do, I mean, the number of people in our town hasn't changed. It's eight, you know, eight thousand people, but we just can't do everything. And I'm not convinced that another officer, I mean, I'm, I would rather see more money to hot, to incentivize people to come and stay. I think, you know, making sure we have quality people. I think adding another officer, another, you know, which is actually $50,000, you know, more, even if you take the decrease over time, it's just, you know, uh, not going to solve all the problems. We have to figure out how to do things differently and smarter and, you know, having, you know, budget when I first, you know, council was $4 million and now it's what? Eight million dollars, 10 million dollars. Uh, I mean, at some point we have to figure out, you know, how do we, you know, kind of do things? We can't do everything. Every city can't do everything, you know? And so, uh, you know, I appreciate it. I, I would like to see more incentives, more ways of, you know, keeping people here and making sure we get quality people. But I'm not sure adding another detective will qualitatively change what happens here. When we have a crime wave, which happens, you know, once a year, once every two year, where, you know, we get them and things stop. We need to count people, need other people to help out. Or there's the thing, the extra personnel person, I don't think personally will, will make a qualitative difference. But that's where I'm, and I, you know, I understand and, you know, council wants to go that way. That's fine. I just think, you know, you know, we have to watch, you know, how much, you know, you know, spending because one way or another, it's taxes.
So, um, just Chief, can you address your collaboration with the other department?
Sure, sure, Mayor. Uh, I was, one thing that Jimmy said that I, uh, definitely understand is better ways of incentivizing staff to stay and to want to be here. Uh, I recently assisted, uh, the Bladensburg Police Department on a interview panel. I was very surprised that for their deputy chief position, uh, how much they were paying, how much higher that is even much higher than our chief's position. And so, uh, but we know they have a different infrastructure of, uh, commercial, uh, uh, taxes and all. Yes, yes. And, uh, so, but still, uh, we look at our other partner agencies, uh, what they're paying, uh, and the quality of people. Uh, I have one chief that called me. He allowed, he at heart had seven new hires in the past year. And he lost five of them within six months to other agencies because they offered them pretty much, uh, $6,000 increase each one. Uh, the bells and whistles of new cruisers, new technologies. Uh, so we, we really want to stay competitive. But my goal also is I, as I said, I look at the model and our residents and 8,000 is what we.
8,000.
And that's what I wanted to say tonight because clearly we, um, understand Jimmy's points of, uh, increased, uh, uh, salaries and so staffing and personnel. But clearly I'm looking at what model we need to keep our people trained, keep our people able to, uh, uh, go on vacations. Uh, some of them have held off vacations because we haven't had the personnel. Um, and one thing that I want to tell you is that, um, clearly there are plenty of police officers out there, but many of would not be a good fit for our city. It would not be a good fit for our residents. The community oriented nature, the de-escalation, the CIT training, that's, those things are welcoming. We want to continue to bring our staff, uh, uh, in that same direction. Uh, but clearly I've seen our deficiencies. So I had to speak up on that and request. And I appreciate the city manager, you've been bringing it here to understand that, um, I don't want it to give where, I wish we had team that could saturate. Uh, and then we're burning out the ones that we do have. Uh, because other trainers have been canceled, uh, canceled because I needed them on the streets because needed high visibility. I told you, you can pick that training up once things calm. And then the detectives part, and I heard you say we don't need another detective. Pretty much this, this is going to be another, this is going to be boots on the ground. It'll be more patrol Jim. So really I want to, I want you to be in that high visibility. I want you to, uh, have fear of crime. Nobody wants to be here if there's a fear of crime. So that high visibility does a lot. So let people know. And then our, as I get emails from our citizens, oh, I can go quickly direct patrol. Have our patrol commander and our detectives look into things quickly. Um, that's the kind of, uh, operation that we're building on. Um, I think I get many emails thanking me for my, uh, responsiveness to them. Um, that's what we want to, we want to have for our.
I just want to make sure that some, a point is clear when I meant the other position. Chief works very, uh, close to DC, the county, the state and various organizations. So I don't want people to think that our team, they like are reached to this other organization. So that's the reason why you see extra people when he has called upon them patrolling also cities to be able to supplement. Our team, as it is on their own, they wouldn't be able to do everything. They're also upon help from like other, uh, including the county to be able, and DC to be able to help on, on some of the things that they can in order to balance it. So I'll leave it at, I'll leave it at that. Uh, but so be aware that had it just been us, we'd definitely be needing a lot more officers because, but it's because of the partnerships that have been established. That morbid. The other thing before I, I don't want to cut you off, but also keep in mind, we do get a differential for PD. Um, that also keep into mind, uh, we do get a differential when it comes to Mr. Kamali every year, like I see manager will have to like write down what the differential is, uh, base it on it. And then some of the costs, I guess I've said also from the county because we have our own police department. So that's part of, uh, the things that we also need to keep in mind as well as public works. Uh, some force code enforcement. So there's a list of things that we, um, that, that's some of that, like, you know, uh, takes into the account. So Chief, I'll give you the last word. If Council has nothing else to add, oh, Luke, go ahead.
When you collect department negotiations, start with the police union?
Oh, we're looking at that now, uh, the city manager and I. And so, uh, clearly the last CBA has expired and it needs to be renegotiated, uh, because we, um, we clearly, uh, see that there's a need to address some of the situations we've seen.
So, and so staff salaries will be part of those negotiations, obviously. Um, okay. So that's something to keep in mind, um, for future funding. Um, I appreciate the comment Jared made, uh, about, uh, personnel and the, the long-term cost that can keep. And I appreciate the comment Jimmy made about, you know, you've got to kind of, um, you know, you're going to have that crime. You can't stop it all. So, so, so what do you spend your money on? And maybe you spend it more on retention and recruitment. Um, and if collective bar negotiations are going to start, you know, maybe that money has to be, we have to be mindful of, of needing that money, uh, because of consequences of those negotiations from the salary perspective. Okay. All right. Um, my head's all over the place. Thanks.
Jared?
Yeah, that was, and thanks for bringing that up because I remember talking to my chief about this when I first came on, but like that, that does, that does give me a little bit of pause is if we don't know the outcome of those negotiations and the, um, the mandates that it will place upon the budget, it, it might feel to me like a little premature to want to move forward with additional staffing if we don't know how costs may grow, um, based on those. Because this, this budget, this proposed budget does not, obviously you don't know what the CPA negotiation is going to look like.
And the reason that we're, you're not saying anything, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, of course.
There is a meeting coming up in April.
So I think we should leave that comment alone because of negotiations. So I don't want us to make sure we're entering to a discussion that we should not be having.
No, I just want to say. Yeah, there is.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So also keep in mind that even if you add the extra officer here, it's going to take a couple of months before this will, ideally by June, we should be able to approve it. So there's still time, you know, to think about what you guys want to do as well. Okay? So not all the answers. Also, just to be clear, this is not like, because we said the next page, just it means like we're approving this. We're just like doing a read through. Okay. Uh, that's clear for the community. So that was, they're not like, and everything's going to, no, it's having a read through. So the next conversations will need touch the items that, um, we are changing, adding or subtracting on it. And that's it.
What is the cost of the extra officer salaries and?
That one, it's about just, uh, 60,000 salary. We're looking at 54, yes, 54 to 57. It depends on the experience. And also the benefits, you have to include the benefits. So.
Is that point, is that point three multiplier?
Oh, say.
Wrong.
Say, you know, depends on.
25 to 30,000.
Okay.
Yeah. Already.
50% multiplier. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, any females to add as we move on to, uh, the next one? Okay, nothing on the, you have something on the chat or? One, give me one second, ladies and gentlemen. Um,
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, there. Thank you, Chief, for coming. So can I ask, um, Council, um, it is right now 2:00 PM. Do you guys want to take a short break for, uh, lunch?
Yep.
Yes, Luke, Jimmy, hello?
Yes, please.
Yes. Okay. So, um, we are going to take a small break, uh, for lunch, 30, what, 20 minutes, 30 minutes? What do you guys want?
1:20 is fine.
Yeah, that's what you guys say, like 20 minute break. We'll be right back. All right. Thank you, guys.
No, we're not going to be sitting.
Thank you. All right, my little, there you go, police. All right. So welcome back from our lunch break. Thank you for our wonderful staff to make sure they provide the things that we need. So that we could move right through it. And, uh, the, uh, actually cut off a different thing, uh, the chief of police and the police. And, uh, the, uh, actually cut off a different thing, uh, the Chief of Police and the police team for the great work they do for our city. Uh, and thank you for being also here on Saturday. Now we're moving forward, uh, one, two, three pages, uh, from the police budget to end up in public works that we have here are newly selected, no. Um, Public Works Director, Rosio Latore, who's going to be joining us for this part of the discussion as well. Thank you for being here on a Saturday, Rosio.
Thank you all. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having me.
On, on her birthday weekend. So make sure if you see her on Monday, wish her happy birthday. Okay? No pressure. Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we go by starting public works, uh, expenditure. So we start with the wages and leave pay line item five thousand to five thousand zero one. Uh, we have a seven percent decrease in the salary and the reason I believe that I moved from Parkland to the City Hall. And, uh, the overtime is also, we're looking at so far how much we have used. So we bring it down three thousand dollars, but we're going to recalculate that number again. I want to make sure that. So the number is five oh seven eight one seven point seven eight with seven percent decrease. Employee benefits and the services, unfortunately for all the Parkland, this one goes up thirty-five percent, which includes the vehicle, life insurance, dental, medical workers, and unemployment insurance, retirement contribution, which brings us down to four hundred thirty-nine, nine, ten point forty-six. And the next one is materials and supplies. So with the line item fifty-two hundred to fifty-two ten, office supplies, material supplies, so the office supply. We didn't have that line item, so it's zero because we have three elements of same line. Uniforms, it's taken the same. Uniform cleaning, we use Centas and we, uh, they just increased their fee. So it's only two thousand dollars. Street signs, as you know, that our street signs get faded and they get knocked down. We have to replace them. So we go from twenty-five hundred to four thousand with, uh, some increase. Traffic calming device, that's a question that we're going to wait for the mayor to select date for the public hearing. And then we will have some good ideas before June seventh that how much we need to put in this line item. And then vehicle fuel and oil, it's going to stay the same, turning. We have a good maintenance and also our new director is maintaining a good job over there. So with five percent increase, we get to seventy thousand dollars for materials and supplies. Repairs and maintenance line item four, one, three, three to fifty-five, sixty. We have, um, vehicle repair and maintenance, we stay at fifty-five thousand. And equipment repairs and maintenance, that is for our plows, salt, spreader, landscaping equipment that we have, we keep it at the same number, which is thirteen thousand dollars. Equipment purchases, five thousand in case if any of those winter equipment breaks down or landscaping equipment that we're using. So with zero increase, we stay at seventy-three thousand dollars. Professional services, fifty-four hundred to fifty-four eighteen. It's going to be, it's going to be the same except the temporary labor because our team needs to get, uh, some vacation time. So usually we use the labor at that time, which is twenty-five thousand. We asked for thirty thousand. And then insurance for the fleet is going to stay at fifteen thousand. Total is going to be thirty-three thousand, even though we have five thousand increase over there. So with twenty-one percent decrease. Other services and charges, fifty-five oh three to fifty-five twenty-five. It's a team building appreciation, C D L, and the tipping fee, I want to bring everybody's attention. The trash fee has been changed since October from fifty-nine to seventy-one dollars per ton. So the more we do the trash, the more we have to pay for it. So I do appreciate the community to help us to bring the trash down and do the recycling more because the recycling cost is only twenty-seven dollars per ton. And the, and the trash is seventy-one dollars, unfortunately. So that one brings us to one hundred twenty-seven, eight, seventeen with ten percent increase. Then we go to the community activities, line number fifty-five, three, zero, fifty-five, three, one, fifty-five, forty-two, fifty-five, fifty-two. And we have only seventeen hundred dollars because the bike and the green team expenses goes under the admin services and it's under the community activities over there. And then, um, we go to the infrastructure and facility maintenance, fifty-six, ten to fifty-two, thirty. The total cost is seven hundred forty thousand dollars with twenty-two percent increase. And the increase is line item fifty-six oh one, the tree maintenance. Uh, the Director of Public Works and I concluded that we need eighty thousand dollars this year because we have a lot of old trees that they need to be removed or we need to trim them. And the cost with the contractor has gone up. So I do appreciate that. And, uh, also line item fifty-two, three, zero. The last line item in this section, we're asking for five hundred thousand dollars for the sidewalk improvement. Because we have a tool designer study that we finished almost the first four years. So we have other projects and the last, uh, year, which was thirty-fourth street and other side of the Rondo Road because of the levy project, we couldn't do anything. So we need to have some money over there. And this is only fi- five percent of the sidewalk in the city. We have a calculation. And if we need full information, the Director of Public Works has designated the locations, which we aim to email it to everybody. So it's only four or five locations. So I do appreciate that. The total we're asking is seven hundred forty thousand dollars for the line item fifty-six, ten to fifty-two, thirty. Then the capital project, fifty-seven hundred expenses. That was the, last year we had the memorial park in this line item, that three hundred thousand. So, and then, uh, this year we put it under economic development for now until we get into the construction. Then I will have it in public works. So the total operating expenses for the Department of Public Works has decreased minus eight, eight percent, which is one million nine hundred ninety-three two forty-five point twenty-four. Then we have grant expenses for public works, which is the storm water management grant, C B T, Chesapeake Bay Trust has given us another one hundred forty-two thousand dollars that we're going to use it to intercept some of the runoff in the city and bring this stormwater management under control somehow. And, um, that should be it for total expenses for public works. And if you have any questions, you and I will be the black ones.
Perfect. Thank you. Council, you heard me through, uh, the public works, uh, portion of the budget. Any question, is that your hand up?
Yeah.
Doing on the other side? You're like, I'm all like, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Jared.
No questions. Uh, vehicle fuel and oil, you had twenty thousand this year. Uh, actuals last year were sixteen dollars. The actuals year before, six hundred forty-one dollars.
Well, I would like to explain about that.
I figure there's a, there's an explanation.
No, that's not right because I can, I can tell you that we usually, this number, I, I just mark it to look into it. I think finance is not registering those invoices. And so that's, that's not the right number.
Or I guess, okay, if those aren't correct for the last couple, and let's just say twenty possibly is, like what, where's the jump from five thousand twenty? Or if you look at F Y twenty actuals?
Twenty actual, yes. Let me, okay, I got your question. Let me ask, uh, let me answer it this way. The vehicle fuel, we get it from the county. So we have a gas station by fire department.
Yep.
And usually they send us yearly invoice. So I didn't have anything to do with that five thousand dollars. I don't know how they got five thousand dollars. And the reason that that twenty thousand dollars was there, I just copied the number from F Y twenty-two until I go back and do my research. So I promise by April nineteen, I will have like Ron and I working on it. And that's what we discussed last week. And you know that that turnover in finance department has made those number a little bit, you know.
There are certain expenses that are difficult to allocate, things like office supplies and gasoline and sometimes utilities and, um, uh, sometimes they don't get allocated between departments correctly. And you suspect that's what's happening.
And I know you'll reconcile these. And I mean, I was just like, is, is the budgeted number appropriate given, I guess? And it sounds like it is based on previous years, but in this case, there wasn't a trend for me to look at it. So that's why.
No, I appreciate that. Definitely. We're going to look into it and come back to Mayor and Council.
Um, thanks for your note on the tipping fees. And I tried that about that on the way down. That is also a really good reminder, um, for us to tell, remind our citizens about how much it costs to trash versus recycle.
Exactly.
Do that at all. Um, and that's.
It's a big difference.
Well, saving.
Or compost.
Or compost, yeah. Or no compost instead of yard waste. I mean, and started yard waste, which I actually did. Cost like twenty-seven bucks a ton. So that was, uh, that was really helpful. Um, let's see, on the, one thing I know, uh, Luke, and I apologize if I'm not thinking about this in the right place. You know, we talked about like a broad traffic, citywide traffic study. Um, where would that end up?
All right.
Public Works budget or?
Well, this is going to be in public works budget, but, uh, we have sent the R F P out last week. So we're waiting to get the proposals from three different companies, transportation engineering firm, including tool design. And the last day to turn in is April fifteen before the work session, which is April nineteen. We're going to open all the proposal on Monday with Director of Public Works, select the contractor, and we know how much we can spend for that.
Okay.
After you.
It will be.
It will be determined by that time.
Short and absolute independent cost of estimate, which you don't have at this moment.
No, I don't have it right now.
For this.
But the R F P is out after the meeting that we had, you guys asked me to do.
Okay. And then when you receive, you'll, the bids, you'll have a sense of.
How much we need to allocate under Public Works Department to complete that study and present it to Mayor and Council.
Okay, that's, that's, that's helpful. Yeah, no, I, I've been in the same place when I've put out bids. Not being able like, we think this is how much this costs, but it's harder now until.
No, we want to make sure that by April nineteen, the work session I will have it for Mayor and Council.
Um, I make sure there's a separate line item is added so that we like, we could just pop in the number.
Yes.
If we could make a note of that so that way we do not lose track of, uh, this, um, this expense coming through. Okay, so that way on the nineteenth we do a check in.
Walking my way. Um, yes, uh, the traffic calming devices, um, and, and maybe additional color from council members that have been here before. So obviously we've had people express interest, some real requests. Do we not want to have like some sitting allocation and not have to like wait a fiscal year until we do it every year? Because this is just like trying to explain like why it takes us like fourteen months to do the traffic bump is, yeah.
We could do that, but the, the good thing would be, or it would be cheaper on this city when we have a number of the locations because the contractor looked at the package. If they see that they're going to implement like in two thousand nineteen, we implemented them twenty-five speed bumps, which it cost me only twenty-three hundred dollars. So that's why I was.
Total or each?
Each, each.
Okay.
So what I'm trying to say, I am waiting for that public hearing. And once we have that one, we can reach out to our contractors and ask them to provide the good number.
That, because I, yeah.
Then we can use it for moving forward.
And, and I am kind of the mind, like the whole point of doing that, like we have a process that basically is like case by case, louds voice, whoever got the crap together, like puts in requests. But I, I agree, like it doesn't result in an optimal planning and implementation of speed control devices. It just like throws them wherever asked. And I think, you know, maybe we go through with what our processes put forward, people requested, but we have this. We, we have a study that maybe mental health system.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. If, if we do this study, so I think it'll be to the city's benefit to wait until that the study determines the right location for the speed bumps and the numbers that we need. Then we have a path forward to.
Yeah, some of them might end up being like speed bumps. They might be like bumps that were.
Exactly, curve extension.
Yeah.
You know, raised crosswalk. There are so many traffic calming devices that they could suggest to it. And, and then we can look at the cost and see which one is, you know.
Okay, because that's the, the biggest messaging challenge I have is kind of like what, why does this take?
Well, I'm sorry about that.
No, 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 no. It's, it's, but like, we don't want to have this, I asked for it and then you get it. I asked, you get it. That doesn't make a lot of sense. But I'm just trying to like message, understand how we're thinking about it. So I can relay a process that makes sense to residents that ask.
Regarding that, I would be, have, I will have a chance to talk to the City Manager because this week is like packed.
Mayor's been out and we're waiting.
The mayor offerings out, not only that, I had to go talk to, oh, well, there's been a lot of stuff, mayor stuff I've been doing all week. It's, it's a lot. And I have a regular job. Things to do. Uh, but we'll sit down. Do you think it's like even with the hearing, we'll hear the information, stuff like that. In reality, it's like we need to have the study because we're going to do it the welcome approach. So if the study says, oh, you guys put a red guard where you put a bump, we are not spending five thousand dollars to like remove that bomb to change it into something else. Or if we're deciding to like fix that street for a particular reason, that's another thing that we need to take into account. Or if the county is part of the water store management is trying to do that, it's not beneficial for us to be able to do that. And then, so we have a couple of pieces we need to hear will be the first one to figure out. The other thing is like it gives, sends the wrong message that we have a hearing and it's done. It doesn't necessarily work that because the one bump alone. If like, if nobody else requests nothing else, it's not going to be two thousand and something. It's going to be a lot more money. So they're putting up like three, might fall into one.
You may not even able to find the contractor to come for even five or six of them. Because usually they have to bring all the equipments, materials, and they want to make sure that they can do it.
And that information is really helpful in explaining to, like, hey, we need, we need to.
Exactly.
Yeah. Residents, that makes sense. Thank you.
Did I think, uh, to address the question with fuel, um, and oil, it is, it was, it is well known that in the previous budget, sometimes like they would like put that lining into one thing and would not always, uh, be able to start like, you know, whose, um, whose fuel and oil it is compared to like the whole entire staff. So as of, um, was it twenty seventeen? Look, so when we decided to like change it to where like every department needed to know what they were spending to be able to justify instead of having like, so there's a big pocket and then having things put out from one place to another. We couldn't tell who was spending what because it was a bigger, um, so it was your supplies. Here it is. And it came from everywhere. We're like, why does City Hall fall heavily in supplies?
Yeah.
And we didn't realize that it was because all of the supplies were coming to City Hall, not to the different departments. And now what, that way you know, like for department more or less, like what, what is being utilized, fuel and stuff like that. So that's part of the reason why you might be able to have those numbers. Even now, um, because they not have been like sorted the way that we think they should be sorted and how they're being sorted now. Correct?
Thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. There. Okay. All right. Uh, Jimmy and Luke?
Just two things, uh, on the traffic thing, as maybe we're going to have to change the order. Orders because orders is like, uh, says that, you know, we tell people what they're supposed to be doing. You know, that they're supposed to file a petition and then have an open hearing if they want a, uh, traffic calming device.
Yeah.
And that's after, you know, we decide.
That is the process. I don't think the timing is proper.
No, no, but we made it, wanted to talk about changing the order. So, so people understand a different process, you know, which we want to do. You know, which is more holistic.
No, which is fair because this has not been something that we've been having at all until recently.
But just to the question, I'll do it now. And so at the end, uh, in terms of the medical, uh, benefits, I mean, it doubled. Not just fifty, I mean, it's, it's actually a hundred percent increase in years.
Yeah.
And is there a, a different package or, because that's, that's more than, I mean, I've seen a hundred percent increases.
Yeah, no, that's not. Yeah, no, that's not a hundred percent increase in the rates. There are actually a few things going on with, with the medical insurance. One. Uh, it was under budgeted last year. We, we've already spent. Almost a hundred thousand dollars in seven months. So you extrapolate that out. That's gonna be. You know, awfully close to two hundred thousand dollars by the end of the year. Plus. Going back. I guess a year ago or so, there, there was this period of time where the bill wasn't getting paid. Uh, and it had to do with the transition, you know, after, um. Uh, before Ray King and, and, and the previous finance director left and. You know, there was this gap and, and the bill was not being paid attention to. So he got all that caught up, but I don't know how the expense fell between. The different fiscal year. So I, I've already, uh, mentioned to Kamali that I need to do a deeper dive. Cause he's, all that history. So. This number probably will get adjusted. I'll, I'll follow it.
The actuals went from four, four sixteen to four ninety and now nine hundred. You know, and that's like, uh, if you look at the, you know, back and over the walls, like, uh, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Huge.
Yeah.
And is it dental thing new?
No, we've always had dental.
We always had dental.
So I suspect that what happened because of that weird timing and, and when the bills were paid, it has messed up my trend analysis. So. I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna. Get out.
Yeah.
Uh, to, to come with a more accurate number.
So you should put a little highlight on it.
Yeah.
You're so good at this.
Yeah.
It's a good side job.
Also, we had the same trouble when I came on there. A lot of outstanding bills for medical, state retirement and the charges that they make. They say that either you pay the fine or we're not gonna, we're not gonna renew your policy or moving forward. So we have all of this invoices that, and late fee charges, like I couldn't believe it. So, but we promised that moving forward, we're gonna have a clear path and we're gonna have a. Good numbers for next year. Hopefully we are here to present it to.
Mr. Kamali, this report and checks every single penny of it I've seen. So that they've been very good at that. And that's that they've been able to. Get this budget as close as I've seen in a long, in a long time, you know, so that definitely thanks to that. Jimmy, was that, um, anything else? You good? Uh, Luke.
Um, I do have questions. Uh, uh, hold on, let me give you a second here to. Apparently this works. Can I just put this on here?
Yeah.
It's the future. Take off my cover. Oh, my goodness.
Wow. Bringing us back to life, that twenty second century. Thank you.
She has something new.
Ah, I know. He's got seventeen bikes and six thousand speeding seats. Okay. Everyone's, everyone's but here. So I just wanna be clear on the streets and sidewalks for Paris, cause, um. CEO Kamali sent those to us earlier.
I think if you sent those, if you did.
I think I, I should have. It should just, you know, just nice. Okay. Um, so there are. Four things. So, so it's five hundred thousand dollars budgeted for. The first one is Rhode Island Avenue sidewalks from thirty three oh seven Rhode Island to Eastern Avenue. And the cost is one thirty four, seven, three, eight. Um, unless we wanna only fix portions, which would be fifty thousand sixty six. And I. I mean, my preference would be to fix the whole thing in one, one straight shot. Um, and I don't know, you know, folks can chime in if they don't agree with that. The second one, which is Taylor Street between Rainier and thirty first. That one is the mayor and council put on hold and. Um, because there's no actual. There, it would make no sense to put in a sidewalk there because there are front porches. Where you'd have to, you'd have to rip up people's. From porches.
Land is caving in.
It would be.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not considering the fight when other people were called off. The end.
Yeah.
You and I drove that.
Oh, yeah.
You have to rip up.
We go, we walk.
Yeah, there's no place for a sidewalk. Um, so that one can come off. Then there's the thirty street. Sidewalk between Taylor and Bunker Hill for a hundred and twenty nine thousand two eight five. And then there's the. So then there's the thirty fourth street, which is the business corridor, which is the redesign that Selena's familiar with. We've talked about in the past and everything we've defined. It's the mixed use town center design for thirty fourth street. So it's. You bump out the curb, I think on the eastern edge of this, of the street, the center line gets moved a little bit. And that will enable for street trees to be planted in grates in the sidewalks there. And then you would do a. Um, colorful crosswalk at thirty fourth and Bunker Hill. So it's basically doing the mixed use town center design. Now. What it doesn't do is. Bury the, the, the utility lines, cause that's a whole capital issue. It can take a long time and a lot of funding. And what it doesn't fund is the street. It doesn't fund any street work. So just so everyone's clear on that. Um, and I don't think it fit, it funds lighting on the eastern side of the street. So we need to talk about whether that's thirty four in business district from.
Circle to bunker hill.
Yeah. Um, and then, uh, so that total without the Taylor Street.
Two oh four.
Uh, right, the thirty fourth street's two oh four. The total of the Rhode Island Avenue, thirty three oh seven to Eastern. Thirtieth between Taylor and Bunker Hill, and then the thirty fourth street business corridor would be four sixty eight, three twelve. So about the five hundred. So.
Guys, or can I be having side conversations?
Just try to get the.
Um.
Kill me. Sorry. Let me just. He's missing me. He's missing me.
Uh, yeah, but I will ask you guys, see their request to say that because it's really real when we have one council member and then. And then we have another conversation going on. The other thing is like yourself, remember, we have a mic in front of us. So you might not realize that the mic is very powerful. It's picking your conversation while he's also speaking. So side conversations are gonna be very rare because of it as well. And we realize the mic is very strong. It will pick up. Smaller conversations than you think on it. Uh, go ahead, Luke.
So the, the total cost for the projects, if we subtract out the Taylor Street project is four hundred and sixty eight thousand three hundred and twelve. So it's still right around the five hundred thousand allocated. Um, just making sure everybody's aware of that. Um. So we, even if you take the Taylor Street out, it looks like the five hundred thousand is probably still an accurate number. So there would be, those would be the only three projects and they would all be sidewalks, not street projects.
Yeah. Anything else to add as far as it?
Um, you know, we've, we've talked about in ARPA doing something on Newton Street. Um, so this obviously would not be enough money to do that. Um. Hey, Jimmy, you're familiar with the sidewalk and the street issues on Newton Street on the south side. Um, Jared, I think you've heard us talk about it, uh, even though it's in more one.
Yeah.
Um, so that's the other big one, but there's not much money in this line item for that. So if we did wanna consider that. Not a part of ARPA, then we'd have to do something here unless we just wanna have that conversation as a part of ARPA funding, throwing that out there.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, do you need any answer from the staff? Go ahead, Mr. Kamali.
Yeah, I just wanna bring to your attention, to mayor and council's attention. Rosio, the director of public works has a big list. We have so many places that we get complaints. So. We just asked for five hundred thousand dollars for this location, but we do appreciate if we could get something from ARPA. Or more money over here because we just had a, a phone call last week. You remember the lady on Rhode Island Avenue? And she tripped over the sidewalk, so I had to give her the claim. And the claim number to file the jet. So the premium goes up. What I'm trying to say. Uh, we need more money, but whatever the council can give it to us will be very helpful. How much more do you guys need? We can come up with that.
So can I make a proposal so that way this is not a side conversation within the budget? I would like for you guys to add it to our next meeting, whether it's like, if not the fifth, the nineteen. So we could talk about proposals when it comes specifically for ARPA and streets and sidewalks. So we have a, a bigger discussion. To figure out what it looks like. Would that work for you guys, the nineteen?
If you allow us, yes, nineteen, nineteen.
So you pick whichever day works for you guys and just submit a work session will probably be better. So when we have the time. And then go ahead and have this conversation to figure out what else is on the list. And then what it's gonna look like when it comes to ARPA funding for that is specific, um, besides. So. I'm next on the dog. So, um, thank you guys for putting this together and all the information that came about. So that was one of my questions, what for the five hun, for the half a million, right?
Half a million.
So that is, um, that does not include ARPA or police camera on it, correct? It's just like budget itself.
Well, we budgeted, but somehow we have to find.
But what I'm saying is it doesn't fall on the ARPA or the police camera at this point. It's just like put in there.
Yeah, okay. But what I was hoping that we could withdraw some more money from the speed camera because it's a public safety. Issue and not ARPA money. Then have different locations for ARPA if we could use some of those money. Under government general services.
So the reason why I ask is because I need to know whether like it's a hundred, like half a million, right? And we're trying to add more from ARPA. And police camera, or we're thinking of, um. A combination between subsidizing some of the half million and moving forward to some of that. Kind of get my.
I don't know.
I'm gonna do five hundred study and add more to it.
Add more to it and get some allocation from ARPA money because the speed camera, the police department needs to use some of that money too. So we wanna make sure that.
All right. I just wanted to make sure it was clear because I didn't want it to automatically assume that it was, oh, one of the, you have a follow up. Do you have a follow up question to my follow up question? Hold on. I'll put you on the, on the dock. Um.
No, you go, you go.
You probably have a very smart question.
I, I was just gonna say, I think what you're saying is this five hundred. Only counts for the three identified products that we discussed. To get more of what they want, we would either have to add more into this budget or do it through an ARPA process.
A hundred percent. I just wanted to make sure it was level all the information, what we're requesting. All right, let me, I'm almost done. Uh, the other thing I was going to ask you guys was. My three minutes. I think Jimmy had it as well. So we'll go a one more round again. For the bike haul up.
Yes.
Um, is there a reason why that number, uh, changed?
No, bike haul, mayor, if you remember, they, they send us a request.
Yeah.
For sixty five hundred for this year.
Okay.
And Jared, I think was on the same email with me. So we have it in the community.
So you guys moved it over.
Yeah, it's over. But it's gonna be under public works supervision. Make sure that.
Can we make a note on the, on the budget so that way we are aware of that? Cause that would, because when it's time to, uh, allocate, it's doing what? Sometimes it gets a little wishy washy. And, uh, that was clear to the residents who, who's running what.
Can I say something?
Yes.
But I was recommending to mayor and council to move the green team expenses because usually she is the liaison with the green team.
Yep.
And the bike always referred to them for fuel, for any.
Yes.
So I think that should be, but because it was in the community, I didn't wanna touch it. I wanna make sure that we can. Get the approval from you guys and bring it over there.
All right, perfect. No, it makes sense. Um. Let me see. So we'll have the back of meeting. Um, the other thing I have question for you guys, the capital area, the capital improvement plan. Um, I know we discussed it, so that's gonna be up for the nineteen, right?
Yes.
Basically what the maintenance is for all of our buildings and what we need to allocate for them. So that's gonna be put into this part of the budget as well. Under subheading for capital improvement plan, but like monitored by public works.
Exactly. I'm gonna work with director of public works to come up with those for.
For those numbers.
All, all the infrastructures that we have, police department.
Yeah.
Welcome center, insurance building, Dr. Gupta's, any other places that we have to make sure that.
That we have a maintenance schedule on and that's where that the three year projected will also help for next year when we do the F Y twenty four. So we could project what the maintenance plan is. For not just our vehicles, our buildings and, and even if we're posting moments. All right. So I will stay for that for my first round. I'm gonna go Jimmy, uh, Luke and Jared.
This is a short question. Uh, so those three projects were just sidewalk projects. So there's no money at all for potholes streets in the budget then?
For what?
For streets, you know, like repaving. So there's no money at all in the budget for any street improvements.
Well, let me, let me just answer you. Uh, three years ago, Tool Design did the study. Most of the problem and the community wanted us to fix the sidewalks. Streets are in a good condition, rating, you know, the asphalt and the surfaces, except, except few locations. But right now. What we are trying to do, if I don't mind to get money and fix more streets, that's why I thought that we're gonna have some discussion in the ARPA. And get some money from ARPA. And here, I just wanna get the speed camera on to be allocated for this purpose. And then later on, I was gonna come to, and I already talked to mayor. I said, mayor, I need some money. I have so many locations that needs to be resurfaced, repaid. And, uh, no, I appreciate that.
I told Rosio, the alleyway, I see the alley between, uh, Tilden and Upsher is like a complete disaster.
Yeah, I know, I know where you're talking. We couldn't fix it three years ago because we didn't have money. And we have so many complaints. Residents are not happy. And when you go and drive over there, it's all sinkhole and potholes and we need to fix that.
So that'll be part of like the larger discussion. That's what I was like, let's put in the whole item on this, cause it's a lot to discuss between. And for emergencies, sometimes what happens is like if they have an emergency after, if it was a tiny hole, then then like, you know, the storm faded into a full size. Uh, the contingency, uh, section, that's when like they request the city funds to be able to. Fix some of that emergency repairs. Uh, that's what's happened in the past, correct? So. Yeah, so be a bigger discussion to, um, to dive in when it comes to street sidewalks and everything else that we're looking into, especially because we do. Flexi payment and rain bars and everything else that goes on. It's, it's a bigger. Discussion than for us just addressing the budget, but. Good, good, uh, good point. Uh, Luke.
No, I'm good.
I was like, God, okay, I'll go to Jared in case you remember something after Jared. Go ahead.
Um, so you, you all mentioned that, you know, this five hundred K for those, or three hundred whatever for this couple of projects. But there's a pretty large capital backlog.
Yes.
Um.
We could share the tool designs study with you and you. You'll see that it's a lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there's things so like, there's a lot of, um, federal and state infrastructure money gonna be potentially available. Like if that thing pops open, which they will for.
Yeah, definitely. We appreciate that.
But probably no more than sixty days, which could happen in the next month or two.
Okay.
Are you all gonna be ready if we have a, something we wanna submit?
Yep.
Time. Okay.
We have, we have the list and we can get the proposal, the cost.
Right to have a consultant too.
Yeah, and we have everything.
Okay, okay. That's just what, cause you know, the more money we can get from some, somewhere else that isn't.
Is there?
Isn't our.
Yeah, is there any limit that we can apply or because I'm trying to put something together, I wanna make sure that was the cap that we could.
It depends on the, I mean, I could go through the infrastructure bill programs with you, Donna Matrix and.
Okay.
Talk about what's.
All right.
That's helpful.
So that would be.
Can we make a bar of that conversation as well? When we talk about the infrastructure, we could put it out to the agenda.
Yeah.
And if that means we to have a standalone meeting, just as first of that, then we'll go ahead and do that.
I'm also okay with Jared working with the city manager just because of his expertise. So we don't.
Appreciate it.
I know, I'm saying to inform us in the community because if we're not in the whole pages, it becomes one person deciding for all of us. And that cannot happen because then we get all of ourselves in very big trouble because we're supposed to, decisions are supposed to be made.
It's not, not a decision.
Not a decision, just for them.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, that's.
This is on the horizon.
No, that's what I said. They can work together and then if you have, you know, presented forward to and go on.
Yeah, I'm not making any.
We do appreciate that.
And the tool design review for residents are watching, it is in the website. It's been in the website for many, many, many years. But is there as well, uh, so that way you guys go, so get it. I'm sure Kamali will go ahead and circulate it to the team, but also it's there. Um, because we have a beautiful thing about having a third party come in and does the study. It allows us for, you know, to not fall into people feeling like, because I'm like best friends with Luke, that of a sudden. Taylor Street is gonna be like, you know, the press of the, of the game or like. At thirty street and over there, like, you know, um, in various, so that would be a level now the playing field and allow for the staff to be able to say. This is how we pre-planned. Not only that, be able to work with a contractor and say, this is the plan of work that we do. To be able to get the best price and then the contractor knew like, this is what I've been hired for instead of like here and there that was costing us a lot more money. And so thank you for the work on, on that, cause definitely it's changed, um, how much stuff we could do based on what we have in front of us. Okay, um, council, is there anything else for our public works, uh, director? On this item? No, wow. Rosio, thank you for having, uh, spent some of your Saturday here, alerting us that, you know, we should be running to lunch, right? Uh, but, uh, thank you so much and enjoy your birthday, please. Okay?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Take care for everything.
So Rosio Howell, Mark twenty two.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
She's eighteen and she tries to like spread her age. She's twenty two. Don't lie, Rosio. We know your trick.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you. So.
We appreciate any money that we can get from any sources.
I'll send you the matrix of it.
Yeah, I really appreciate.
Don't be holding on the resources.
Anybody can help us. We'd be glad to do that. All right, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Rosio. Please extend that thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Lucio. Please extend the thank you to the whole entire public works team. Um, I know they're working Monday to Saturday. Uh, making sure the streets are clean and definitely it's made a big difference. Alright, perfect. So, thank you. So moving on to the next item. Which is like two pages over, this is the debt services contingency reserve.
No, that's mine.
She's like already giving yourself away. So debt services and contingency reserve, Mr. Kamali, the the first yours.
Alright, thank you. And I'm gonna ask Ron, they just weigh in and see if you got. Other services and charges, so line item fifty-five ninety-eight, fifty-five ninety-nine, contingency and miscellaneous expenses. So for this year, we just, you know, we're looking at fifty thousand dollars for unforeseen situation. In case if the city manager wants to go and use that money. But overall, it's uh thirty-three percent less than. More than, more than, I'm sorry, more than last year. So we're looking at fifty thousand dollars only debt services. So line item fifty-eight twenty to fifty-eight fifteen, community legacy debt service payment is zero. Interest bond, vast property is zero. And I just wanna uh make sure that mayor and council, I'm sorry for last time. I inform you guys that we have two debts, which I was provided that information by the bank. But we found out, uh, thank you to Ron, Ron just, you know, mentioned that one of the loan was paid in two thousand sixteen. Extra was not paid completely, but the last payment paid December fourth, twenty twenty-one. But I was given the schedule, the payment schedule by the bank that this loan is gonna go all the way to twenty-three. When Ron raised that question to me, no, that loan is being paid off. So we contacted the bank and verified the information. So the city has only one outstanding loan. Which is gonna go until twenty twenty-four. So that's why you see the best property over here is zero. So, am I right?
Yes.
Alright, so then the next one, fifty-eight ten, which is the bond for the funeral home. We have ten thousand ninety-nine hundred eighty-eight. Ron, you want to explain that one, please?
Sure, yes. The 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 two bonds that they're actually held by uh the bank. Um, they are fixed um payment uh twice a year, we we back payment. And and the payment is the same every time. So as that um. That bond gets paid down, what happens is a portion that goes to interest decreases. And the portion that goes to principal increases, but the total always remains the same. So the total annual cost is a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And we just split it differently each year that goes by.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Luke, go ahead.
Um, so the outstanding debt on this is probably more like three hundred, four hundred.
Yeah, three hundred, less than four hundred dollars.
We can, we can give you the exact. As a thing, yes. So something for the mayor and council to consider, um. You know, there's, there's a potential for paying off that debt and reallocating this money um to. Things like streets and sidewalks or anything else y'all want to do. Just throwing maybe pots hall, I'm just throwing that, throwing that out there for folks to consider.
If um, if I could, there's a wrinkle.
Okay.
Okay, i- in government budgeting.
Yeah.
Well, when you make a payment on a loan, that's considered an expense. So if you paid off that, you'd have to pay off that loan at fiscal twenty-two.
Right.
To free up money for.
I understand that.
Fiscal twenty.
Yes, yeah, paying it out of reserves in fiscal twenty-two and yeah, that was the idea, yeah.
So uh, thank you for bringing that up and definitely for clarifying it because remember, it's not just our conversations so that people hear it and so that way they know what it means. And that way we could um adjust our timeline to what we need to do to make one a decision to secure the payment. If we choose to move that direction, so that way it's clear and this budget wants us approved because we no longer have it. Alright, perfect. Thank you, guys. Jimmy? And then Jared?
I didn't see anywhere in the budget, uh, question of how much we have in reserves and the possibility of taking a one-time transfer to use some of our capital. So anywhere, I mean, is it like, I, you know, how much is there in the reserves? And and also maybe even a chart of what the reserves has done because.
I didn't have to dig up the exact number.
Played it in channel, is it like?
You know, well, we, and and that's not a simple question either because there there's the reserve according gap. And there's the reserve according to budgetary basis and and they can be substantially different. But for our purposes here, call it four million dollars.
And is that different than the investment fund?
Yes, that's just money set aside.
How much is in the investment fund?
Uh, about two. Two, two million, yeah, two million and some.
So we can get all this information.
And for my identification, what is the investment fund?
So when we say reserves, I think that's a misnomer. I think we should not use that term anymore. Um, there is, think of us as a house, your own home, right? You've got your checking account. And you've got your savings account and then you've got maybe a money market account or investments, right? So we've got a savings account, which he described as like four million dollars, but depending on how you account for, it could be different. And then we've got this investment account that the state only lets us lets us invest in a very non-risky funding, which is, I hate it. Um, and that's another two point three, two point.
So together, we have six million.
So we have six million dollars setting aside.
That's what we call reserves.
Yeah, but I think that's a miss.
The other thing is like to keep in mind about one million of that is utilized for matching uh grants slash um.
The economic.
Money, yeah. Could obviously it's like a different, a different one million aside, right? This one million is for any, uh, you have to have it make sure that we clear at least one million. Because more or less, that's what we need to be able to, most of our grants are reimbursable grants, right? So that allows us for our matching grant.
Okay.
So that's the thing. So you need to be able to not think, we have six open, think about like at least one. Is being able to move this money around because of the fact that subsidized, like, you know, either matching grass that we get a lot of or reimbursement, that's majority of them.
Yes.
So that money allows us to be able to like put the money upfront out of the budget, right? And then like get it back when we get it back. But if we continue thinking about it, that was also gonna have your matching because remember, it's not your money until they clear you to get it back. But if you're matching, like in the case of say Memorial, get getting X amount for X amount, right? We did good because like two for three, right?
Yep.
But that extra hundred needs to make sure that we, once we spend it out, then we get whatever else we're getting back. So it subsidize that matching brand and everything that's to be fluent enough for us to be able to utilize. So we could get reversed without getting ourselves into into financial trouble. Yeah.
Um, well, I I can do it on another round. I have questions on Pots Hall if you want to make it.
Yeah, so I think we all went, I think I'm down to it. So far the list that I sent included the reserve, uh Jimmy. That they're gonna be be adding to it. Um, and there is a debt start, but this letter. On it right before we on it that like gives you a little bit more description of where we are restricting funding economics involved and stuff like that on it. And why the contingent status is set aside, right? So Mr. Kamali should be able to write, like, you know, they should go to like what the reserve looks like for the nineteen. To be able to um fill on it and by the time we get it approved, you know, like, don't do whatever number it is. Um, and hopefully by then we we figure out what we want to do because um saving and interest rates will definitely give us room to do other stuffs. Um, is there anything anybody needs to address when it comes to debt services, contingency, or the reserve? Uh, council, Jared?
No.
Be good, Luke?
No.
Jimmy? I thought, raise your hand, no. Alright, anything else for any of you guys to add?
We, we will definitely provide the information by April nineteen.
Alright.
And with mayor and council, so.
Perfect. Um, I will wanna add, um. There's one more thing that we didn't discuss when it went to public works and I know where council is at. Um, because I don't know where it would definitely will fall. If we decide to consider uh the compost program. That will fall the under, because we're looking at what, sixty, sixty-five?
Five hundred.
Six thousand five hundred when it comes to like, you know, the other thing is like, so the consideration was for us to do it and we cannot connect with the county to do the services for us. But that was the caveat, right?
Exactly. What would we use it for exactly?
So the presentation was given about.
Three. What are we talking about? We're talking about the.
City composting program.
Oh, composting, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I need to make sure that, you know, so Luke, Luke is very good at this, you know, all these years of life, five years. Five years worth of like our craziness of, you know, all, he puts it all together in one pre-document. That's gonna be like his retirement job, we'll call you in for everything. But um, saying that, so I think we need to account for that because the way I see it is like we have added a couple of things. I don't see a lot of things we do, so. Keep it, keep that in consideration in the next conversation when it comes to um what the taxes uh look like. I'm looking at the agenda to see if I'm missing anything else. Alright, so um, other, anything else you had aside from that?
Yeah, I think he should go back and just read over the the bottom line expenses because we skipped over that.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna read the.
And then, and then he can go through the bottom line and how we budgeted this for a surplus. We all have a solid understanding of that.
Alright. I'm gonna read it and you're gonna explain it.
Alright, so general fund revenues?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm twenty-two minutes left.
Let's go.
Alright, so uh, we go to the general expenditure.
It's like page number six or seven. That's lucky for us.
Alright.
Yeah, so if you want to, this is the most up-to-date version, if you want to read off of this one.
Go ahead.
Just the bottom line total.
And total revenue.
Okay, sure. So the 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 total, the bottom line total revenue that we projected this budget. Um, in operating, it's uh seven million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand. Uh, including the grants, it's ten million four ninety-six.
Eleven million four.
I'm sorry, you're, you're correct, eleven eight four sixty-one, I was reading wrong column. Uh, over on the expense side, uh, our total. Yeah, it's actually several, several pages later.
Okay, thank you.
So the total operating expenses are so seven million four ninety-four. Probably seven million four ninety-five rounding up. And with the grant expenses, that's ten million ninety-five. So there is currently uh a surplus of. Uh, right, right at uh four hundred thousand dollars, or had a little change, four ten.
Yeah.
Four fifteen.
Four sixty-four, four one, six point seventeen. That's the difference between the revenue. And general expenditures, including expenditures for all the. Question.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
So in the, in the past, uh, and I know in our years. Did you actually uh budget that money to go into reserves? I mean, in other words, the budget has to be balanced, right? This is a five hundred thousand dollars difference. So I mean, is that money we could use to lower the tax rate without changing the expenditures, some of it? Or is it has to be, I mean, what were you planning to do with that extra five hundred thousand dollars? Without doing anything, automatically go into whatever you call the the savings reserves, is that? We did nothing?
No, no, no. No, 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 we're not passing this.
If we pass it as it is.
Passed it then by that time, Jimmy, I have a plan for it. If mayor and council agree, we have to use that money to our street and sidewalk improvements. The five hundred thousand dollars extra, but this is just an estimate. I I won't count on it. I want to make sure that because that's my first budget and next year at this time, I'm not gonna be short. But I think, you know, we're just, this, these are just the numbers right now until, you know, we go through this process. But we could send it, assume it to go to reserve or however the mayor and council prefer to do.
So the short answer is like, yeah, it does, it goes into our reserve uh or rainy, you know, day check. Uh, the other thing is that keep in mind, this is what the budget looks like, seven point four. However, we have added um a collection of items. On it that that means that money from what's being proposed to us has to move from one category to the other. Or we're gonna start cutting into that um as well. And that's not even um, this is accounting. This is not accounting the tax break uh that we're trying to get. So be fully um. Fully aware, even if it's two, two to four, whichever it is, right? Um, that's not accounted in this budget. So you, and one in, you will have to like reduce uh what this budget looks like. And if we're trying to um do nearly as much as I'm thinking of that, if not all of it. Um, either you move the money around to try to stay within the seven, seven, four and every, all the other numbers behind. Or you're gonna have to like increase the line to be able to fulfill all of this. One thing I realized that is not, hasn't been in the city man, um, my apologies, city manager. Uh, mayor and council budget light item that I want to make sure we add is like a retreat. Usually every time we have an election, we go ahead and um have a retreat for mayor and council to be able. Our consultant to come in and talk to us because we definitely come from different backgrounds and different expectations. Uh, we, we, um, because of the various changes, we didn't have one last year and I think is desperately needed. And now having another person being added after um the elections uh in the next month or so. Um, I think it's it's more needed now than ever because at the end of the day, we are gonna be working as as a group of five. Um, along with that extra person and a couple of us have been working together for um, for quite a bit. But I think it's it's definitely, I felt like we took out a lot of it, especially like, you know, to the, this is the third council that me and Luke sit together. But every council has been different and that allows for us to be able to figure out, not just our priorities, but also um. How do we match up, trying to get stuff together? So if we could put um whatever that amount was, um, if you could find a previous budget, if you could go ahead and add it, please.
We actually talked about it last week, but it was too.
Yes. No, 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 I'm making sure like it's 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 Luke's notes as well because I know it's in your notes.
No, we and Melissa were looking at that line item.
You better believe we're gonna find some money for that. Uh, go ahead, Luke.
Thank you. Um, I just want to congratulate Mr. Kamali, wonderful post-budget. Um, I think we can meet everybody's interests here. Um, you know, the, I'm looking at all the expenses right now. We've got, got a handful there TBD. The um, the National League of Cities and Mayor Association fees, um, social media. Uh, the, the street and sidewalk holistic redesign study, the traffic home in devices. Sidewalk fixes that Mr. Kamali and Lucio are gonna identify or street fixes and then the the retreat expense. Um, but you know, and yeah, well, we've got the, then we've got the, those are all TBD. The ones that we know are ten thousand for the um, uh, the strategic vision. Um, the uh four thousand for the mayor and council line item, the twelve thousand five hundred for the veterans long-term. Um, resident tax credit, sixty-five hundred for composting. Um, you know, all this taken together, if we, if we just, you know, say a three cent tax decrease, you know, a hundred and twenty-one thousand. It's totally doable, um, to Jimmy's point within the 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 difference right now that we have. So. Um, there's other things that you guys gotta take a look at and and changes are gonna be made and I've got those listed here. So we'll see how it all um plays out in the wash, but I think we're at a really good point. Um, so, good work, everyone.
Thank you. Um, may I add one more thing before we put it aside? I apologize because I'm thinking like. My mind is like, I'm making sure I'm covering whatever else we need to cover from the past year. Uh, we had discussed um potentially a competition when it comes to redesigning like the city uh logo emblem or whatever it is. At this point, we have like, I think that count is fixed. I think until we have one here. That is different than the one we have there, then it's different from what our offices were. And if you have like a third page. I could guarantee you it's like a fourth one. And the, oh, the, the flag has three other ones. So I think that if we could put money aside, we have a lot of great artists in the city. Another series, we could get a template probably from Chevrolet who just did the redesign on their, on their logo. Uh, so that way, even if it's a logo that we decide old use, because at this point, it's very hard to order pins because. Depending, depending what model or logo you look into, I mean, we've had this conversation with staff, we have been speaking very much to um. To this one, but that's because we have like purposely done it that way, but this was already like, it talks about a hundred and ten years.
Yep.
And sometimes we crop that up because we feel like a hundred and ten years was in twenty-ten. We're in twenty uh twenty-two. And um, that's still no longer part of the hundred, we're a hundred and twelve. So if we could add that to the list, so to try to put some funding behind it. I definitely would like for us to reconsider it.
Thank you. And then the other thing that I think maybe we need to spend time on, yeah, the, for work. And then the other thing that I think maybe we need to spend time on at the work session as a standalone line item is Pots Hall. Um, the feds increased the interest rate again, that's going to increase our borrowing, so um, I think what I want to know is, um, whether the city is in a good position to get a big loan for DH City or whether we need to wait another year. Um, I think that's a question I want to know the answer to. Um, because if there is money available for Pots Hall and go financing, I'd like to not wait too, too long, but I am, I'm willing to wait, I just need to know where everyone's heads at on that, that's all.
Thank you, Jimmy.
That brings up the other issue about the, uh, uh, spring lake geothermic study, I didn't see anything.
Oh, spring park.
Spring hydro. I was like lake.
Spring, whatever it's a spring. Uh, but that we, you know, no, we, I mean, you know, I talked about supporting, you know, a study about what could be done to whatever happens to the, the labyrinth, at least the.
The well.
The well, yeah, that we should, we should put plenty aside for whatever, I don't know if we can get an estimate, how much tax that would cost to do it.
We have to reach out to the experts and consult, uh, I don't know who to follow, but that one too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kamali, thank you, Jimmy.
Oh, whatever other money maybe we should have to do for that, so.
I, I added to it, I added to it.
At this rate, guys, it looks like that, we just dropped one penny like back. Not, not just you're talking collectively, we did the whole list, we have Jared, any other penny to like, is that for this? All right, perfect, so, um, I would like to, I know, the list is growing by the second.
I would, I would say there's, there's one more item that I forgot to mention.
I thought you were joking, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, which one?
There was, this can be an ARPA discussion, um, I was approached about, um, potential, um, artist housing issues, um, uh, and, and, and the potential for an art, art housing cooperative. Um, and so there is, uh, some of our neighboring cities are considering whether, um, and wondering whether Mount Rainier will be willing to do some sort of combo effort on this front. Um, it would be a lot of money, like each city giving up a hundred and fifty thousand or something like that, but I just, um, and flagging that right now. I don't know if anybody would be interested in it or whether that's an ARPA thing or. It's very vague, I'm just flagging it as a potential discussion later, I think people are going to work on details and I'll have more details, but just flag that, that may not be for this budget, but I'm just flagging.
So may, I, is this aside from the artist loft housing, because we happen to be very particular than most.
Aside from that, aside.
Because that's like a lot of units and.
Yeah.
That building and that's like way below.
I think it would be for, um, I, it may not be for actually living, it might be for studio space, but I, I'll, there, there are details to, to come, I'm just flagging.
Okay, thank you, Luke.
I'm not, I'm not going to put that in.
Yeah. All right, so, um, for the, um, piece of order, does anybody has anything else they'd like to state? Council, city manager, team?
Thank you, mayor and council for being patient with us. And we promise to improve our budget by nineteen.
This has been one of the most, um, accurate number wise, Mr. Kamali, and I think it has a lot to do with you doing all the extra work. Like I mentioned earlier with you like going through the sheets and finding to the last penny. That has a lot for you to be able to see the numbers, you're very handsome on that and I do appreciate that, that's one of the reasons why we definitely selected you as our city manager, because you definitely watch every single penny we bring, bring, bring in or goes out. We're very glad for that, um, team?
Not me, it's my team.
I know, that's what, that's what, that's what the next, the next portion was going to be. That's what's going to be, the next portion was going to be team, right? Um, the whole directors, you know, uh, but not just the directors, everybody in the different departments have done an outstanding job of making sure we are taking care of our residents, whether they're like making sure that the trees are where they need to be, make sure that trash is picked up, make sure that every single check is clear, so we're not getting late fees, make sure that the, the community is communicated. Uh, the community send the message of what the programs we're doing, but even organizing the, the programs and everything else that goes along with the agendas and stuff like that. I think we have all get to the point where we're jelling together to be able to find what the savings are, where we need the help. And that's definitely reflected, um, on this budget. Uh, so I want to thank you guys all collectively for all the work that you guys are, are putting to helping us out and Mr. Kamali, I know you had less than a year to put this together, obviously, because you became city manager this summer, but I'm very thankful for your patience on this, okay? Um, and for your work as well, okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't hesitate, any objections? Hearing, none at this, uh, budget hearing and budget, I'm sorry, another budget here, the budgets work session, um, has ended at three fifty-two PM, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you all, see, I told you. Ron?
Email me, my personal email, I was.